Well, we, uh, I do not see, I'm looking, uh, Gwen. Do you see, do we have Trustee Friedrich with us?
I think that, uh, Judge Reed, that he was told that he was gonna be sworn in this afternoon, which is why I think he may not be here this morning.
Well, actually, he did mention that he would be joining this morning.
He did?
Oh, we wanted to do, yes.
Alrighty, um, well, let's see, Judge, I am very conscious of your time. I'm sorry, Gwen, were you gonna say something?
Yeah, I, the, the same thing that you were going to say, and so, um, what I can do is, um, I will reach out to Judge Reed and I'll also reach out to, uh, Trustee Friedrich. He was going to join this morning at night.
Perfect, okay, appreciate you being on hold, Judge.
That's fine, go right ahead, I'm, I'm fine.
Alright, thank you.
So, Judge Reed, did you want to, um, I will, uh, have you log back in? Or did you want to go in the waiting room, or you can stay with us?
You can put me in the waiting room until you want.
Great, wonderful, well, good morning again to everyone, um, and welcoming to everyone who's joined us, uh, this morning. I do not know if we have, uh, our new Trustee Tillet and Jones with us this morning. Um, if you are here. I know we don't, we're not on mute, not everybody's on mute.
Yes, Trustee Tillet is here.
Ah, okay, great, welcome, Trustee Tillet, delighted you're with us. Uh, Trustee Tillet will be sworn in in September. We've invited him to join our meeting today and also our full board meeting this afternoon. Uh, Dr. Tiffany Jones may join us at some point, we'll recognize her at that time. So, in the interest of moving things along, I'm gonna call on Paul Time, Chair of Committee on Regional Development for his report. Good morning, Trustee Time.
Good morning, uh, I will call the Committee on Regional Development to order. Um, once, let's see, as Chair of the Committee, I want to remind everyone that we will be conducting today's meeting pursuant to the new amendments to the Open Meetings Act that apply during states of emergency. The amendments were signed into law and allow for public bodies to meet via electronic means. The new law does require, however, that we take all votes via roll call, which we will do today. Additionally, pursuant to the amendments, the law, all chats, instant messages, texts, and other written communications between members of the board regarding the transaction of the public business during the remote meeting are deemed a public record. Finally, I will ask all committee members, board members, and participating staff to please identify yourself before participating in deliberations, including making motions, proposing amendments, and raising points of order. As the Chair of the Committee on Regional Development, it's my responsibility to remind all members of the Board of their duties under the State Government Ethics Act to avoid conflicts of interest and appearance of conflict of interest as required by this act. Each member has received the agenda and related information for this Board of Trustees Committee meeting in any board, if any board member knows of any conflict of interest or appearance of conflict with reflect, re- respect to any matter coming before the Board of Trustees at this meeting, the conflict or appearance of conflict should be identified at this time. Uh, I can't see anybody, so, uh, if, Gwen, if you would chime in, if during our discussion today, somebody would like to, um, to speak and get up my, change my screen here to the agenda. Let's see. Alright, uh, Gwen, if you would call the roll, please.
Yes, Committee on Regional Development, Trustee Paul Time.
Present.
Trustee Harold Barnes. Trustee Phyllis Bottomworth.
Present.
Trustee Cam Brown.
Present.
Trustee Lynn Bunch.
Present.
And Trustee Andy Culpepper.
Present.
Everyone is in attendance.
Thank you, and now I will look for a motion to approve the minutes from March 8th meeting.
So move, this is Andy.
Cam Brown, second.
Thank you, is there any discussion on the motion? Then I'll call for, or ask for a roll call vote.
Roll call vote for the minutes. Trustee Time.
Yes.
Trustee Barnes. Trustee Bottomworth.
Yes.
Uh, Trustee Brown offered the second, Trustee Bunch.
Yes.
And Trustee Culpepper offered the motion, the minutes are approved.
Thank you, Gwen, uh, we have had a busy time since our last meeting. We've had several meetings that, uh, Dr. Wilkins will bring us up to date on. There's some exciting stuff going on in the Committee. We, um, have a Regional Economic Development Summit that is moving down the road to, uh, being ready to, to get announced in not too long, and I will turn it over to Dr. Wilkins.
Good morning, uh, thank you for joining us this morning, and I will give an update this morning on the efforts of the Regional Development Committee. Uh, during the past, uh, year, we have been working on one strategic initiative that is, uh, framed within the June, uh, twenty through June twenty-one timeframe. And that particular, uh, goal that we have, uh, worked on this year has been the, uh, creation of a Board of Visitors. I'm pleased to announce that, uh, we have moved that through process and we're at the final leg of it. Uh, we, the Chancellor is now vetting and contacting the nominees, uh, to serve on the Board, and we should have that process completed, uh, by the month, and so we're looking forward to the establishment of our Board of Visitors, and we would like to thank each of you for, uh, submitting your nominations for the Chancellor's consideration. Another strategic initiative that we have worked on this year, uh, is the, uh, six point three point two, where our goal is to identify market annual events to bring, uh, the community to the campus. Uh, this particular strategic initiative, uh, spans the five-year period of our strategic plan. We are proud of, of the Committee's effort here and, uh, organizing and planning a regional economic summit. Uh, as Trustee Time has mentioned, uh, we have had several meetings since our last meeting, uh, that has allowed us to come to, uh, this place today, but we are happy to share with you. We've set a tentative date, uh, for the Regional Economic Summit. Uh, we're looking at, uh, this event taking place on, uh, October the twenty-eighth, uh, twenty-twenty-one. Uh, the Committee has, uh, invited, uh, Secretary, uh, Michelle Saunders from the North Carolina Department of Commerce to be the keynote. We are awaiting her confirmation, so at this point, she's invited, but she has not confirmed. So, once she confirms, then we'll be able to say that she will be the keynote, but we're looking forward, uh, to this event. Uh, our theme of the keynote will be opportunities in the Northeast now and the future. Uh, Trustee Time has really, uh, leveraged the, uh, buy-in of the region. Uh, we have convened, uh, stakeholders, uh, of economic interest from across the region, and each of them has expressed the, uh, need for such an event, and they are totally, uh, in favor of this event being sponsored by Elizabeth City State University. Uh, when we look at our topics that we are going to discuss, there are some great ones from economic, uh, from, from economic impact, uh, to green gardening, farming, uh, broadband. Uh, some of these are, some of these topics are being explored at this time by the Committee. Uh, we're also excited that, uh, our very own Dr. Kingsley Nowala, a professor of business and economics, uh, he is leading our regional economic forecast effort. Uh, he is convening a group of colleagues to work on this so that we can report out at our summit, a regional economic forecast. Last year, or the last event that was held in the region, uh, we did have someone presenting, uh, at that particular event, not hosted by ECSU, but as they came, they presented more of an economic forecast for the Greenville area. But we recognize importance, uh, a, in economic forecast as it relates to northeastern North Carolina. So, Dr. Kingsley Nowala, uh, has graciously accepted that, and we are very appreciative of his efforts, and we're looking forward to that report. The Small Business and Technology Development Center, uh, under the leadership of, uh, Mrs. Wanda Cooper, uh, they continue to make an impact in the region. And as you see, for quarters one and quarter two of this year, uh, they have had substantial impact, uh, with the businesses served at two-hundred-and-sixty-four. They've created capital formation, uh, it, at ten million dollars plus, and we see the jobs created during this period, new business starts, uh, the events that they're having, uh, they are highly utilized, and they're really doing a great effort in, uh, their small business and technology development efforts throughout this region. In April, uh, the Small Business and Develop, Small Business, uh, Center, uh, they did host a regional job fair. As you see, uh, we have, they have sponsors throughout the area, and they had forty-five businesses to participate in this event. And here we have some pictures, just a few pictures of some of their engagements. Uh, we see they participated at the Terrell County Small Business Food Drive. Uh, they've worked with businesses throughout the region. Uh, Personal Treasures, uh, Custom Gifts is one of the local businesses in, in Elizabeth City, uh, that, uh, was created with the assistance of our, uh, SBTDC, and they're holding, uh, some dessert, uh, some shirts that they designed for an event, uh, sponsored by the SBTDC. So, Personal Treasures Custom Gifts is one of those businesses impacted by, uh, our Small Business Technology Development Center. Okay, so that, uh, concludes the update on the, on this part of our regional economic development. Uh, we will have a legislative update, uh, from, uh, Carson Rich.
Thank you, Dr. Wilkins, and, and you can pull that down if, if folks want to see my face. If not, I, I won't take it personally. Um, good morning, everyone, so, not to jump right to it, but the main topic of discussion at the moment, not just here, but likely every campus in the system, is the status of the North Carolina State Budget. Um, so I just want to quickly bring you up to speed, and you may be already, it has definitely been a consistent topic in the news. But in short, with about less than a month before the new fiscal year begins, there is no new state budget. Uh, does this mean there will not be a budget in the end? No, um, and I don't think there's a, a need to suddenly speculate or worry. Uh, it just means that there could be alternative steps that are taken. For example, as some of you may have heard, last Thursday, Senate Leader Phil Berger indicated a willingness to move ahead with smaller mini-budget bills by mid-June. Uh, however, House Speaker Tim Moore last Thursday also indicated his plans for mid-June, which is for the House to move ahead with its own full comprehensive budget, with or without a Senate deal on the agreed spending level. So, overall, this does not indicate any clear paths forward at the moment. Uh, Governor Cooper did recently state that he does not want a repeat of the budget stalemate that we experienced in the twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty biennium. Uh, but whether or not the legislature, legislature is able to reach an agreement on a new state budget, take the route of passing many budgets, there has been reassurance that UNC system agenda items will be taken care of. The House, Senate, and Governor's Office have all given positive feedback regarding the legislative requests for the system and its campuses. So, overall, we do not yet know what the future looks like, but there is optimism regarding system initiatives. And all that aside, really, our, our stance at ECSU is to stress that we too are just thankful for the support we have received from our step, state legislature, especially in these past couple of years. Um, I, I know the Chancellor and a few others have seen firsthand that specifically how San's Senate leadership have expressed a great interest in ECSU's recent efforts, Dr. Dixon's leadership in our path forward. So, I think that as, uh, as things progress over the next few weeks, we'll hopefully have more information. But again, w- we have strong relationships, and as things change, we'll be able to hear it directly from the folks that are advocating for us, um, i- i- in, in the legislature, and of course, from the System Office and, uh, conversations we have on our own. But other than that, if there aren't any questions, that concludes my, uh, my news blast for you all for today.
Alright, thank you both very much, and while we, um, before I open up for questions and discussion, I wanted to thank, uh, ECSU staff, uh, Dr. Wilkins, Dr. Nowala, uh, Wanda, uh, is it Cooper, is that right? I believe, uh, with the Small Business and Technology Development Center. Uh, we brought a whole bunch of folks from all over the region that are interested in economic development and asked for their assistance to find ways that ECSU could engage, and they have been all over it. Dr. Nowala has been, uh, very active and, and holding his own committee meetings, uh, to make sure that he's driving the right data to help us, uh, in the region understand what types of opportunities we have and also where we are today, uh, and integrating some of those impacts of COVID and what that might mean as we go forward. So, um, and, uh, Wanda has been very active in finding partners for us to, uh, look at workforce development, uh, conversations. So, I just wanted to thank, and, Dr. Wilkins and, and his crew there for, um, and Carson for keeping things moving for us on that committee. So, uh, with that, I'll open up for any questions or comments. I can't see anybody, so if anybody wants to speak. Alright, I'm not hearing anything, so I will, uh, with no objections, I'll make the committee adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Chair Robinson, please unmute.
Thank you, I was thanking you, Trustee Time, for taking the time out of your travel schedule to make sure you were with us, and thank you for all this incredible work that you, uh, are helping to lead with, uh, our VC Wilkins and, uh, Carson and, uh, the team. It really is great, I, I'm very excited about, uh, this new committee of ours, so thank you for all of the hard work. Uh, our Endowment Committee, this is really a placeholder, you all see, it's just five minutes. As the Board may recall, we decided that we would no longer have committee reports here because per statute, these are business and strategic, uh, uh, discussions that really are not open to the public. So, that is a reminder, uh, and also that, uh, our VC Clinton, McClinton, will give us a, um, update during our Finance Committee meeting. And so I will not be calling that committee together, so I think we're right on the money here.
Yes.
Chair Culpepper for Committee on Finance Audit and University Advancement.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I call the Committee on, uh, Finance Audit and Budget Order. Um, as Chair of that Committee, I want to remind everyone that we will be conducting today's meeting pursuant to the new amendments to the Open Meetings Act that apply during states of emergency. The amendments were signed into law and allow for public bodies to meet via electronic means. The new law does require, however, that we take all votes by roll call, which we will do today. Additionally, pursuant to the amendments to the law, all chats, instant messages, texts, and other written communications between members of the Board regarding the transaction of the public business during the remote meetings are deemed a public record. Finally, I will ask all committee members, board members, and participating staff to please identify yourselves before participating in deliberations, including making motions, proposing amendments, and raising points of order. As Chair of the Committee, uh, of Finance and Budget and Audit, it is my responsibility to remind all members of the Board of their duty under the State Government Ethics Act to avoid conflicts of interest and appearances of conflict of interest as required by this act. Each member has received the agenda and related information from the Board of Trustees meeting. If any board member knows of any conflict of interest or appearances of conflict of interest with any matter coming before the Board of Trustees in this meeting, the conflict, appearance of conflict should be identified at this time. Alright, uh, Gwen, can we call the, uh, the, uh, the roll call?
On the roll, yes, indeed. The Committee on Finance Audit and University Advancement, Trustee Andy Culpepper. Trustee Cam Brown.
Here.
Trustee Lynn Bunch. Here. Trustee Chris Evans, and it looks like she's.
He is coming in the room now.
There, she's coming in, yes. Uh, and Trustee Kenneth Wilkins. Don't see him, you do have a call.
Good, Cologne, uh, Flash Chancellor for Finance, Lisa McLennan, give her a report.
Good, good morning, trustees, let me share my screen. Good morning again, I will be giving an update on business and finance for fiscal year twenty-one. Um, currently, as of March thirty-first, our total budget is forty-three point nine million dollars for the year. Usually, we are probably at seventy-five percent, since it's the, the second, third, well, third quarter to the close of the fiscal year, we have spent six, sixty-eight point three percent, um, which is really good because we wanted to make sure we have enough at the year-end to close and zero out. And you can look at your details in your materials. For fiscal year twenty-one, for the auxiliary and trust, if you can see, oh, our trust fund balance has really increased, a lot of that is due to the fifteen million dollar gift, but really now is also due to the, uh, COVID funding that we got from the federal government, uh, receipts, re- reimbursing us for lost revenue, things like that, because part of the gift have been invested, um, as of, actually, it was invested on April first, so that is why that, um, balance is in there. Just to give you an update on fiscal year twenty-two, tuition and fee update, Board of Governors did increase, uh, proved the health service and fee increased by thirty dollars, which you voted on in December. But I just want to let you know, for fiscal year twenty-three, the Board of Governors have already said that we will have a thirty-dollar increased campus security fee. So, we will still go through this normal tuition fee process, but this has actually already been approved by the Board of Governors for fiscal year twenty-three. Most of the other campuses had increased their fee this year, but because we had priority needs with health service, because our students, we needed a full-time counselor, additional full-time counselor, they let us ke- uh, keep our health service fee and, um, defer the campus security fee for fiscal year twenty-three. COVID funding update, last, um, the last time we pre, um, did in March, we was at thirteen point four million dollars. If you look, we at twenty-eight point four. That is how much we have received in COVID-related funding, and the biggest portion is what we just got in, May twenty-twenty-one. Um, we actually just got in fourteen point eight million dollars. This is really great, but then we got some so great, not so great news. We actually have to spend this money within one year. They said they can grant us extension up to one year, but we just don't know. So, with, this is the funding that we thought we had to use up to fiscal year twenty-three. Um, but they have since then taken, changed the status and said, we actually have to spend this money by May of twenty-twenty-two. Um, so, and then with this, the UNC, um, system actually gave us guidelines on how to spend this. It's within five priorities that we, every campus had to submit, so it is actually a monitor plan on how we will spend these proceeds, but o- overall, they didn't think we had to spend it in, they thought two years versus now is one year. So, it may adjust a little bit, but, um, we won't know until probably July. As, uh, Carson pretty much gave you an update on fiscal year twenty, um, two, but nothing's new, um, since the last meeting. I'd just like to keep it out here that, you know, we're still advocating for, uh, re- um, recurring enrollment growth funding because recurring money lets us give recurring items and fund recurring items, and we just don't have enrollment money on, uh, recurring basis. We get one-time funds, but if it's recurring, we can actually include in our base budget and increase recurring items. Strategic goal, um, five is, uh, Operation Excellence Update. Our, um, main focus right now is tackling our budget and really identifying our budget and making sure our budget aligns with our strategic plan of the university. And as of April thirty-first, I mean, April thirtieth, we actually have identified all the recurring, um, funds in our budget. So, now we're working through trying to make sure we have sufficient budget to cover all those recurring items. And then also, we are actually, next year, we will be implementing an all-campus budget, which is the UNC system initiative. Um, we sh- will start implementation of that in July, so this will be all funds. So, this will be our athletics funds, our trust funds, um, anything that we have in our budget, it will be an all-campus, uh, budget plan that the Board of Governors will review as well. So, something you probably, I don't know if y'all have ever had, but I wanted to give you an auxiliary update. Um, one thing, when I got here, we was at the end of our contract with Thompson. It was a fifteen-year contract, actually, it usually only ten years, but we, um, rebid it out, we actually, uh, are one of the schools that had, uh, nine, um, companies to bid on our services, so that tells us right there that people are looking at ECSU and normally only get two. Central only had two, which was the largest two. And, um, so that was, that tells us that people are really, really taking interest in ECSU. What was I looking for, campus dining? Campus dining is very important because that is our student experience, hands down. So, if we don't get that right, we fail because students pay a lot of money to eat on our campus, and we needed to align ourselves with a partner that was go, had a successful record, that can get us what we need, provide high-quality food, especially keeping the cost reasonable for our students. So, with further ado, the selection committees, um, chose Airmark to serve as our university next partner. Um, Airmark is one of the largest one in the UNC system. Actually, they have mostly all the UNC schools, they have Chapel Hill. Uh, they actually just renewed Chapel Hill for twenty more years. So, so now they have been, they will be with Chapel Hill for probably forty years. Um, so that tells you their lone partnership because they reinvest in a campus. So, this is something that, um, I was looking for, someone that's gonna partner with us, invest into our campus, make it a little bit better, and, um, bring us up to what other campuses have because ECSU, the students deserve exactly what those campuses at Chapel Hill has as well, and that's what I communicated to the partner from the beginning. If you cannot give us the same type of service at Chapel Hill, you, you're not the right partner for Elizabeth City, because there is no difference, we all in the UNC system. And we did go to campuses and take blind tours of all the, um, for the finalist vendors, and then also, we brought students along with us, and actually, out of all the four students we took, they all voted on Airmark. So, this is just an update to showing you how Airmark, um, based in the UNC system, they pretty much have most of the UNC campuses, they actually have private campuses. If you have been at High Point University or Wake Forest, they have, um, Wake Forest as well as High Point University, the purple campus. But I wanted to give you a little taste of just a overview of what, um, they have, um, already started marketing. Viking Dining is the new, uh, Badeo, that will be our, um, new marketing tool. They have already rolled out, um, and they actually, this week, was, they will probably be starting construction. And Badeo Dining Hall, this is just a sample of variety of foods that they will plan to bring, the comfort foods, we will have the salad, they actually is gonna do a little pop-up C-store in Badeo is, is, um, how they came about with this was very creative, but we will have something until we can get a new residence hall and dining facility. This is one of the things where, um, I think we're, it used to be Viking Subs where Thompson was. We actually will have tenders, lovin' and chicken, this is Chick-fil-A and Zasby's all-in-one. Because one of our survey, based on our students in a retail option, they like Chick-fil-A, they like Zasby's. So, that is pretty much one of the things they. So that is pretty much one of the things they mirror. Now, the second one is Greens to Go. So we're going to have two retail concepts. Greens to Go is where you get your salads fresh made, and this is catering not only to our students who want to eat a little bit healthier, but this catering to our faculty and staff as well. So this is actually, I know a lot of us go across the street to Kathy's and pay ten dollars or twelve dollars for a salad. We can actually go and reinvest back into our campus, because if we eat on our own campus, we actually get commissions off of everything we, we spend. So this is the new theme for Greens to Go. And then last but not least, catering. The new catering is eighteen ninety-one catering. And so we planned, they planned to roll out a big catering day for the campus. Since they couldn't actually come and do it, they actually will do like an exposition sometime this fall, everybody to come and just sample every catering item that you want on the menu. So we are very excited about the eighteen ninety-one catering logo. I think it's very catchy, because it represents who we are. And so I just wanted to give you that kind of update of where we are with choosing our next campus. Any questions?
Are they taking over immediately, or when will they take over?
They actually took over June first, so they, construction will, they've been working with facilities, guys who come in and start construction, and it's really not really construction, it's just upfitting, replacing equipment. They will be doing some things to Badeo to make it a little bit, because we want, we don't want to invest in Badeo too much, because we're asking for a new dining hall, but they are still investing into, I can say a couple of, I could say pretty much two million at least and minimal into this campus, just to help us get in the door.
Any other questions?
Trustee Barnes, will we have availability of, how late in the evening, especially on weekends, will food be available on campus?
The retail space is usually open till ten. It was nine, but we have already agreed on ten. And then it will be evaluated as our students, because I really want to kind of get to eleven, but our students are kind of different, and I understand that. So we agreed to ten o'clock right now in the retail space.
This is Kim Brown. So I heard with the, with the, one of the locations, you said it was Chick-fil-A and Zaxby's?
It's like, that's their theme. So they, they kind of do Chick-fil-A. Their tenders loving chicken is like their brand of Zaxby's and Chick-
But it's not Zaxby's and Chick-fil-A on campus?
No, no, it's not. It's, it's their, like, you know, like, you take Chip Chipotle and they bring out their Mexican, because that's one of the things that they will have into the Badeo dining. It will be, it's kind of like a restaurant style, so it's covering your Chipotle, your Mo's, your Mexican, because that is one, another food item, but they're going to put that actually in Badeo, because students can eat that as unlimited.
Yeah, I guess in the past, I know we've had like, and maybe this is a question for A.D. Bright. I think in the past, we've had Chick-fil-A in the gym, like for basketball games or something.
Yes, they just, they had concessions, but that agreement runs out in June.
Okay, so have we reached out to Chick-fil-A? We got a new owner in the city.
Yes, we, just to, I really don't want to go into that finance thing, but Chick-fil-A actually did not give us any monetary value for hosting concessions. And just being, you know, honest, they gave us marketing, but we need actually, athletics need commissions back. And that's where we're, we're going down that avenue to get them to cover their budget and increase their budget, because that's one way to increase their budget, if they can get a commission base, and that's the avenue we're exploring.
Okay. In, in complete disclosure, A.D. Bright talked to me, because that owner's a member of my church.
Yes, sir, will do.
I have a question for A.D.C. McClinton. Will the public be allowed to come into facilities and go greens?
That's right. That is exactly what we want. We want the campus, the community to come to our campus and eat. Because if you, I mean, if you've ever been in Winston-Salem, they used to go to WSSU and eat. So if we can do that to our campus and bring people in to eat on our campus, that would be amazing, because that would just bring revenue stream to the university, which we need.
Absolutely.
Creating revenue for us.
So I, I'm sure there's a marketing plan to let the community know when it's here. Okay.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
I think that's a great idea. This is Kim Brown again. I guess my only concern would be security. How are we gonna, you know, when you open the campus up like that, how are we going to maintain any kind of security?
I guess right now, currently doing lunch, our campus is open anyway, but Alan, I'll let Alan speak to that.
Yeah, I can respond to that. So, you know, we have an open campus anyway. I, I think, Trustee Brown, our security has a pretty strong protocol in terms of rounding and hopping in those spaces that generate, I guess you can say, a lot of interest at, at different times, you know, throughout the day. So for example, you know, during the dining hours, our security, you know, frequents that space a little bit more than they would during non-dining hours, so on and so forth. So we have a good strategy to deploy our personnel in a strategic way. Again, we have an open campus, so there are people that come on our campus anyway for a myriad of different reasons. They seem to have managed it well in the past, but we will continue to, you know, we'll continue to review as the population increases and deploy patrols to make sure we're as protected as possible.
This is Phyllis. Can, so do I understand that we can come in and bring people for lunch, and we don't need to notify anyone ahead of time?
No, no, you can, you can come in onto the campus, because our campus is open during the day.
Okay, I just wanted to confirm that. Thank you.
We welcome everyone coming one day, you know, eating at the new retail space once it's open.
Trustee Culpepper, you're on mute.
Excuse me. Any other questions?
Chair, I would just like to make a comment. I want to commend B.C. McClinton and the entire leadership team. All of us were there to interview these vendors. I thank President Chambers for having the students involved. This was a very critical process and decision for our campus. And as B.C. McClinton said, you know, we want to make sure that our students love where they live and learn and eat. And so we're excited about this opportunity. We're excited to have the community to be able to come in and enjoy the food and the catering and other things that this vendor is going to be able to offer. I'm also excited. I know A.D. Bright probably wanted to say something, and this goes to Trustee Brown as well. Arrowmark is also bringing a very comprehensive nutritionist to campus, which will also help with structuring nutrition for our student athletes and our entire student body. And so we're excited about that. We haven't had anything like that in a long time or ever. And so to have a nutritionist work with our student athletes and our student body to, to make healthy choices for eating and, and other things that they're going to put in place is very exciting as well. So thank you, Chair.
Ms. McClinton, is that, complete your report?
Yes, that completes my report, Chair. Chairman, Trustee.
And then a report from Audit and Ms. Parker. Are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Good morning, everyone. I have invited the Internal Audit Charter and the Audit Committee Charter. The charters provide a formal written document that defines internal audit's purpose, authority, and responsibility. Annually, we are required to review the charter for any changes. Based on our annual review, there are no changes warranted for the charters at this time. My second item is summary of completed reports. There were two reports completed this quarter. The first report was Student Health Service Operations. This review was conducted to determine operational efficiency of services provided. There were three observations identified, and a follow-up will be conducted in the future. The second report was a review of the CARES Act funding. This review focused on the distribution of funds to all students. It was approximately thirteen hundred students who qualified based on funding requirement. There were no observations identified for this review. That concludes my update. Are there any questions for me?
Can I complete your report?
Yes, sir, that completes my report.
Any questions? Thank you very much. The advancement report, then, I guess, is next on our agenda.
Good morning, everyone. I will share my screen for the advancement report. Let's see. Chair. Am I sharing?
Yes.
Yes.
Just need to go to the beginning.
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Okay. All right. Good morning, everyone. I'm going to start with our report. This morning, we will explore four areas. I'll give an update on four areas. Our fundraising progress, our advancement operations enhancements, brief kind of advancement one oh one, and then share some information on UNC, UNC system benchmarking. One of the things that I will quickly share and you will see is an update from your packet from as of yesterday. So anytime with advancement, it's an up and down game until June thirtieth. So as of yesterday, you will see where we are year over year, and we are at one point four nine. Now, as a quick reminder, our goal for this year was one point four, which was a three-year average. In FY nineteen, we were at one million is what we raised. And for FY twenty, we ended the year at one point six nine. So we have about two and a half weeks to go. This differential, just quickly for the math, is about a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. So from what you saw on your initial report with May twenty-six, this is about five hundred thousand, and as I go through the report, I'll try to kind of help you know where the differential is, if that's something that interests everyone. In comparison for numbers, we are at four, that number should have been, I'm sorry, it should have been fourteen fifteen. And the number for today, for FY twenty-one, should have been twenty, is fourteen twenty-three. And the reason why that is not correct is because when I looked at it this morning, it didn't show up, so I had to try to put it in. But the FY twenty number last year at this time was fourteen fifteen, and this year it's fourteen twenty-three. So we're very, very close from last year. Again, we did not have a desired goal to reach for the number of donors, but we did want to increase our base. We ended our number of donors last year at fourteen ninety-five, just to give everyone some context. By constituents, so our alumni numbers. And just so you'll know, alumni, we are down with our number of alumni, but our goal this year was to increase our alumni to ten seventy-one. And why that number, as you may recall, we did a conversion with our database from Banner to Razor's Edge, which was an opportunity for us because of the UNC system giving us and all of the other HSMIs in the system Razor's Edge to help us upgrade our fundraising efforts. We were able to do a lot of database cleanup. Because of that, to keep our alumni participation rate at six point seven percent, we wanted to achieve one thousand seventy-one alumni donors, and that would help us keep our alumni participation at six point seven percent. And so last year, just for context, we ended our year at eight fifty-five. You can see that we're up with other individuals, pretty much the same for corporate foundations, we're up, and then kind of balanced with other organizations. And so by constituent giving, so alumni numbers are, in dollars, are slightly down. But we did have one significant gift last year, about a hundred thousand dollars. This year, we're up in other individuals. We did have a significant gift this year that was significant, was six figures. And then you can see where the majority of our dollars have come in, and that has been in our corporate giving and our foundation giving. The other organizations, that's the area where I wanted to draw your attention to. Last year, about this time, we got a very large gift from a trust. It was about a hundred and eighty-four thousand, and we've had in this area about two hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars in gifts from other organizations that have not repeated this year. Some of them are religious organizations, some of them are other organizations. And we have kind of looked at some of them. Some of them may repeat, some of them may not. But we are very much focused on those organizations. And we do have some solicitations that we are doing in the closeout of the year in terms of individuals who have not given this year, that gave last year. We've done some analysis. There are about four hundred and twenty-five of those individuals that we are focusing on in the closeout of the year. In addition to that, one of the things that I have been sharing with the board at each meeting is our pipeline summary. You can see where we have been doing proposals throughout the year and the number of proposals that have been submitted, thirty-three, the number that have been funded. What you don't see here are the ones that have been denied. We currently have about a million dollars worth of proposals that are still under review. This might include, or does include, about thirty-seven thousand dollars of proposals for sure of this one million forty-seven thousand that we know have been funded, but the money has not been given to us yet, and we don't include that information in those charts that you saw previously. We don't include that money until it has come in. For board giving, we like to provide an update on where we are with our board giving. I'm excited to say that since this report was created and updated on yesterday that we can anticipate by the end of the week that our trustee giving will also be at a hundred percent, and of course, that number will increase. And our foundation board giving is already at a hundred percent. So thank you to each of you for your participation this year. Two fundraisers that have taken place since we last met are our annual Founder's Day Scholarship Gala. This year, the gala was virtual for the first time. Our fundraising goal was a hundred thousand. We exceeded that goal after expenses. And we do expect that there may be a slight increase in net profit, because we did have some pledges through payroll deduction that are continuing to come in. But the net profit after expenses at this point is a hundred and eight thousand dollars. We don't anticipate any additional expenses at this point. We are complete. We want to thank you all for your support. Those of you who supported this gala benefits the General Scholarship Fund. All of these proceeds minus any seed money from the foundation will go directly to the university for the General Scholarship Fund. I want to thank the foundation on the Culture and Planning Committee, which is chaired by Dr. Jeanette Evans, the executive committee for their leadership and envision and decision to move forward with the gala. What you see there at the bottom of the page is a link to the gala website. You can go to that page and will be able to look at the gala digital program, which does have a list of all of our sponsors. And so we will leave that there, because we do want to thank them all for their support. We have not released the reported event. It is recorded. And we will be sharing that um and um we've not determined exactly when we'll share it. But it is um going to be shared uh for those who could not uh join us for the event on the evening of the thirteenth. Um, um, also, our title sponsor this year was the National Alumni Association um at twenty-five thousand dollars. So we're grateful to them as well. Um, our day of giving this year was on May twenty-first, um, just a few um weeks ago. And um we rescheduled it uh from April thirtieth because we we felt that was not the best time to have the event. Um, we exceeded our goal with the day of giving, um, raising fifty-three thousand. Um, and we had approximately um three hundred and sixty-five donors um this year for day of giving. Um, for advancement operations and enhancement, I want to share with you uh four um new tools that we um have added uh to our our system to help us uh do our work better. The first one is the double the donation. And some of you may have had an opportunity to receive um information about uh the three sixty double the donation. And basically, the three sixty double donation is a software platform that will um send an email to the donor and uh ask them uh or let them know that they may have an opportunity to double their gift. Um, and and basically, they will just um uh complete um a request to their corporate organization um that will allow them to um basically have the organization uh send the paperwork directly to them. And then it's really just a step-by-step prompt, um, and then that will come back to the university. And once they do it one time, they won't have to do it anymore. Um, it allows us to uh one, um, again, increase the uh gift. Number two, ensures accuracy, um, so that the gift not only uh comes to the university, but it uh actually goes to the correct donor and is credited um appropriately. Um, so um very uh simple, um, it seamless with our Razor's Edge system. Um, and um we have implemented that already. Um, the Blackbaud Awards Management um Awards and Stewardship Management System. Um, we are kicking that off, the implementation um this month, later this month. And it is a platform that is going to um help our awards management process, both on the financial aid side and with our donors be much more seamless. And it will allow us to make it easier for our students to apply for our scholarships as well as our donors to have um a better relationships, relationship with our uh donors. They will actually um be able to uh possibly um get to know their donors. Our donors will be able to have profiles there. Um, our students can write our donors uh letters here. Um, it will ensure that we are able to uh give our scholarships away. It allows uh advancement and scholarships and student aid to work seamlessly together. There are eight other institutions in the UNC system that are already using this system. And so we're very excited about how this is going to help us with our scholarship award and our stewardship practices. Um, the the second, the third uh system is target analytics. Um, and this is basically a scoring model that takes our, they've taken our database, they've already done it for us. And they have looked at our um donors and they have segmented the database to say, here are your uh annual gift folks you need to really focus on, here are your major gift folks, here are your folks who can do planned gifts and major gifts or planned gifts and annual gifts. So that the seventeen thousand addressable alumni, um, we can know how we should be targeting and focusing on uh reaching out and working with them. Uh, because we cannot, uh, we don't have a capacity to to work with everyone at one time. And then finally, O-Matic, uh, which is a um system that allows us to work with um our finance uh team, Banner Finance, for seamless transfer of information, which will help us reduce errors between um the information, finance and numbers that are we're putting in Razor's Edge and what's going on to the finance side. So it'll make the work that we do with V C McClinton's team um more seamless and error-free. And all of these uh platforms work um seamlessly with Razor's Edge. So they create a efficiency and reduce error. So quickly, advancement one oh one, you know, what is it? It's just systematic integration of relationship where we want to s- seek support from outside, from alumni friends and other um entities um to advance um our institution um in those rapid ways. Um, you know, core disciplines for advancement, keep it simple, fan-raising, friend-raising, fundraising, and we want to make sure we're doing donor maintenance and compliance. And we've spent a lot of time this year working on donor maintenance and compliance and then working kind of uh backwards. For us, our university advancement model really has been the one university, one mission. Our Board of Trustees, the Foundation and the National Alumni Association. And I want to take a moment to pause here and um thank our board chair for her vision to bring our three boards together for um a leadership um retreat. Although it was just a small group, um, I do believe that it was a very powerful beginning. Um, and I hope that those um individuals who were able to participate in that um found that to be the case. I hope that each of you received the information from our time together. And I do hope that it is just the beginning of us beginning to move forward as one uh unit. So that we can begin to move down to the next to the university strategic plan and the university's priorities together. As our facilitator shared with us, and she has some thirty-plus years of experience in the advancement arena across both publics and privates. She has worked where uh there have been two boards or one board um to work on these things, but never three boards together. So we are unique in that regard. And I do believe that it is um an opportunity for us to begin to really move forward. So I do thank her for that um, that um vision and for forcing us to, I say force, but I don't mean it that way, for encouraging us to move forward. And also, um, I want to thank Ms. Sanders for her um support in ensuring that that it all happened. And then um finally, um, some UNC um system benchmarking. So I, I, you got this in your um packet. I do hope that you took a few minutes to look at it. Um, but I want to talk a little bit about, you know, what does this all mean? And what does it mean for um ECSU? Um, so, you know, it's um a chart that I got directly from the system office um from our BP for advancement, um, Tim Minor and his team. Um, we're all expected to provide a report every year. So this is self-reported data from each institution. And the system office put it together and and um so I was preparing this for to share with you. Um, um, Mr. Minor gave it gave it to me. Um, but what are the observations? So if I draw your attention to line uh column number three, and we look at fundraising professionals. Um, that column does not include uh non-fundraising professionals. And it says five for ECSU, but we don't really have five, if you will. Um, we, we have, we were, we are, have set an expectation that there are five. Um, you know, that includes uh both the chancellor and I. We have two permanent full-time people and we have a part-time person. And then fundraising responsibilities have been assigned to other people who have other duties. But they're not really five, but they're, we say five. And then um we are ranked seventeenth in the number of fundraising professionals. We look at the numbers. We are ranked sixteenth um in budget. That's column number two. And we are ranked seventeenth in um total gift receipts. Um, not, not an exciting place to be, but that's where we are. And then we are ranked thirteenth in um ROI. And there are two ROI columns, but I want to make sure that you know um the difference. Um, one ROI column is the, let me see, one, two, one, two, three, four, the fifth one. And then the seventh one. One of them is the cash ROI, so that's just cash receipts. And then the seventh one is cash and everything else. So if you do pledges, other things. Well, for us, when this report, which is FY nineteen, that would be last year FY nineteen, we weren't doing pledges at the time. So ours is the same. You'll notice that for other institutions, it's different because they were reporting pledges and other di- other things. We, we just were doing cash, no pledges, nothing else. So our return on investment per dollar is two dollars and fifteen cents. And we're thirteenth. We're not at the bottom for that, which is um, we're not, we're not one, but we're not, we're not at the bottom. And um we're, we're thirteenth, but there are three schools that are behind us. One is Fayette State. And Fayette State has ten fundraisers. Um, North Carolina Central, they have twenty-two fundraisers. And UNCG, and they have forty-three fundraisers. Um, so at the end of the day, we, we don't have a lot of money. But what, what I can say is that we are doing, we're, we're making the most of the seven hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars that we do have in our development budget. Um, so um, um, I, I wanted to kind of bring those things um to light. Um, so, you know, in summary, what does that mean? I, I think we're implementing our best practices as, you know, to the, to the, as best we can. Um, I think an increase in um staff fundraising responsibilities and accountability is something that we, we are doing, we need to continue to do. Um, and increased investment in fundraising, you know, might very well could result in an increase in the total cash. And an increase in the number of fundraisers might also um help net in the results, um, and increase in the amount of money that we bring in. Um, and um that concludes my report. And I'd be happy to entertain any questions or go back to any slides that you'd like to um explore or have any other um inquiry about.
Anita, this is Andy, this is Andy Culpepper.
Yes, sir.
You had one slide that had the things that you're able to do and develop now. And one of them was sort of segregate your givers into different categories.
Yes.
Remember that slide?
Yes.
Um, is, is it possible to sort of list your givers by potential?
Yes, sir.
Okay. It seems to me that if you could get the list of twenty or thirty or five or how many ever of your top potential givers, then maybe your Board of Trustees could help you in contacting those top people. If that's within the provisions of the uh university law. In other words, if we got twenty top givers, maybe the Board of Trustees would know some of those people and could help you in the fundraising efforts and help you even though you got a limited budget. Somebody on the Board of Trustees may be able to help the hired staff in talking to these people. But we got to have that information. And it looks like you, looks like you're developing that information at this point.
Yes, sir.
Uh, can you do that?
Yes, we can. We can do that.
Well, see, that, that would be good information to have so that some of us, I mean, I may not know any of them, but somebody on the board like Bishop Bryan, he knows everybody.
Yes.
He, he might be able to help you um by going to see some of these people with you.
Yes. I think that would be, um, I think that would be very helpful.
I think that would be good use of your trustees' time. I mean, other than attending these meetings, that would help us, help you accomplish your goals. In my opinion.
Yes, it, it, it definitely would be um for sure.
So maybe if you can work on that kind of list and show it to us at some point. Anyway, think about that and let us know what you think.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I have a question. This may be more appropriate for the chancellor. Um, Chancellor, I know that we're hamstrung by, you know, not having funds. But what does this portend for increasing the staff that we clearly need uh for our advancement team?
So that is the challenge that we faced, uh Chair, and um is something that we're working on. And as Lisa mentioned, when you look at um our need for enrollment growth funding, recurring funding, those, that's funding that can help us with hiring staff and hiring faculty. Um, we know uh just even in our strategic plan that we have to have or have be intentional about putting an investment in our advancement services. Um, Anita, as you saw, and I did request that she showed the Board of Trustees how we compare amongst our peers in the UNC system. Um, they're doing all they can with who they have right now. And we see the return on investment from that standpoint, but we also know that um, you know, the capacity is not there. And we can do so much more once we invest in advancement staff and grow that staff. Um, and so I think, you know, of course, there's something on our radar. There's something we're looking at operationally from the standpoint of being able to hire and rebuild our uh capacity amongst staff, specifically in advancement. Uh, because when we invest there, that's when we see that return. We see the um, the money, the reach uh coming in more fluently. And then um, you know, also we'll just be able to see our growth in that area uh as it pertains to endowment, scholarships and other opportunities for fundraising. And I have to say, uh, Trustee Culpepper, I totally agree with you um that a list like that will give the trustees an opportunity to become more engaged on the fundraising side. Um, as Anita mentioned, we have not been able to even produce such a report. Um, the money that was invested from the Board of Governors, the UNC Board of Governors, the five million dollars so that we could purchase Razor's Edge and other um software like that to help us uh become more organized and structured in that way, now we're able to, to provide such a report. And so um I'm excited about the direction that we're going. V C um Walton, I'm glad she shows back up for work every day because she was uh giving, given when she stepped foot on this campus, a huge challenge in bringing us up to par. And we, we've come a long way, but still have a long way to go uh with our fundraising. But I commend her and her staff of not even five people, because remember she said that five includes me. So not even five people um with the work that they've been able to do successfully thus far. But we will be able to provide reports like that. And Chair, we have to make that advancement, um, that uh intentional uh investment in advancement, as you mentioned. And we're going to do all we can to make sure that that happens.
I, I guess where I'm going is that this data is phenomenal. It's just what we need. But it continues to paint the picture of uh of inequity. Um, we have a system that's looking at all those numbers as well, I'm sure. And we know that, you know, not necessarily more bodies mean more money. But when we have that kind of disparate impact, which we see in these numbers, our system office should be, be looking at that. I, I'm sure that you're having those discussions with President Hans. But uh it's helpful for the board to know this as well, so that we can bring the same argument to um Board of Governors and to Chair Ramsey. I mean, the numbers are very, very telling and it's not a pretty picture.
Yes, I remember, remember the um HMSI committee when it was first developed under Chair Harry Smith at the Board of Governors level. Um, it was actually the first agenda item was university advancement. And that's what led us to the investment of the five million dollars to bring uh the smaller campuses, more specifically, up to par in regards to the software Razor's Edge and other things that Anita alluded to that we were now using. And so um they understand that there is a significant, um, I guess, distinction of the smaller campus versus the larger campus in regards to fundraising abilities. And they do have a vice president at the system level, Tim Minor, that allude, that uh Anita alert um alluded to. He is responsible for really looking into what the system office can do to help support campuses like our own in our fundraising efforts. So So yes, um, we will continue to advocate and thank you uh, to you and the board trustees for doing the same. Uh, but we have to continuously push this because that comparison chart, chart that I asked, I needed to show you was one that we, that was also shown to the Board of Governors, so they could see the capacity of, of staff and what that looks like across the system as well. So we will continue to push this conversation and think about ways that we can do uh, more to invest uh, on our campus and also externally with support of advancement services.
Thank you.
Chair Robinson?
Yes.
We do, I see that uh, trustee Friedrich uh, has his hand up. Good morning, sir.
Yes, well, before you speak, trustee Friedrich, welcome, welcome on behalf of the board. We're delighted you're with us and to let the board know that today is the official start for trustee Friedrich, and please, your comment, sir.
Uh, good morning, and thank you for inviting me. Uh, I very much appreciate it. It was interesting uh, what trustee Culpepper had said. There's a, a system in use uh, that a lot of fundraisers use, use called um, Wealth Quotient. It's a corporation out of New York City, and they really specialize in this hub system that uh, trustee Culpepper was just describing. Um, we have found it somewhat useful, of course, from a sales perspective, but I know with nonprofits in particular where they specialize as well as luxury goods, they find a way to access the money. And again, it's using your existing contacts and then again extrapolating from there. Um, they do it in a systematic way and they have access to many databases, which could be very useful. And quite frankly, they're very reasonable, relatively speaking. So I just bring that up and I'm happy to explore that further with you. I have used them in my professional capacity as well.
Thank you.
This is trustee Barnes. Uh, I also like to, to simply say that in terms of in, increasing the number of professionals that we have in our fundraising area is an area that the chancellor and many board members have pushed for a number of years. And it also talks to how closely we are to becoming a true, full university system where every aspect of that system it's a resource and uh, it needs to be invested in as we go forward, and I think that the system can do a much better job and in, investing in this resource in that area. We've received a, a number of uh, opportunities and investment from the system, but in the fundraising area, uh, they did significantly assist us with the new program. But also um, it's almost uh, impossible for a small school to make that leap forward without some additional investment in, in the area of personnel and the fundraising area. So I think it's something that we need to continue to nudge uh, the Board of Governors about and, and, and try to work hard to make sure that we close that gap. It's almost impossible to do by yourself, and so we, we definitely need that assistance and need to continue to push for.
Any other questions for, on advancement? If not, I declare our committee meeting adjourned.
Trustee Culpepper, before we adjourn, I believe that we take action on the minutes of the last meeting.
Thank you. I appreciate that reminder. Is there a motion to approve the minutes for the last meeting that we had in March? Anybody on the committee?
This is Kim Brown. I make that motion.
Thank you, trustee Brown. Is there a second?
Lynn Bunch, second.
Thank you.
I will do the roll call vote for the minutes. Um, trustee Culpepper?
Yes, approved.
Right, trustee Brown offered the motion, trustee Bunch offered the second, trustee Evans?
Approved.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee Culpepper.
Okay, if there are no other questions, comments, then I will now declare the meeting adjourned of this committee. Thank you all.
Thank you, trustee. Excellent committee reports. Uh, we're going to move on to our Committee on Academic Excellence and Strategic Growth. Uh, Chair, our new chair is Stephanie Johnson, and I would like to say thank you to Lynn Bunch for chairing this committee for the years that she has been with us and done an excellent job and had a great rapport with our provost. Uh, so thank you, uh, Chair Bunch, uh, former Chair Bunch. Uh, we had to move some pieces around so that we could have um, uh, the representation at our advancement retreat, which is why we asked, uh, we couldn't have but so many members from that, from one committee at our advancement retreat and still have a non-public meeting. So thank you, trustee Bunch, for being willing to step down for that me, on this, for the sake of that meeting. Trustee Johnson, it's all yours.
Good morning. I call the Committee on Academic Excellence and Strategic Growth to order. Is there a motion to to uh, approve the March meeting minutes?
Trustee Johnson, do you want to read the statement?
I'll read the statement first then. As Chair of the Committee, I want to remind everyone that we will be conducting today's meeting pursuant to the new amendments to the Open Meeting Act that applied during states of emergency. The amendments were signed into law and allow for public bodies to meet via electronic means. The new law does require, however, that we take all votes via roll call, which we will do today. Additionally, pursuant to the amendment to the law, all chats, instant messages, texts, or other written communications between members of the board regarding the transaction of the public business during the remote meeting are deemed a public record. Finally, I will ask all committee members, board members, and participating staff to please identify yourselves before participating in deliberations, including making motions, proposing amendments, and raising points of order. As Chair of the Committee on Academic Excellence and Strategic Growth, it is my responsibility to remind all members of the board of their duty under the State Government Ethics Act to avoid conflict of interest and appearance of conflict of interest as required by this act. Each member has received the agenda and related information for this, uh, trustee board meeting, committee man, meeting. If any board member knows of any conflict of interest or appearance of conflict with respect to any matter coming before the board of trustees at this meeting, the conflict of, of appearance of conflict be identified at this time. Mrs. Sanders, would you do the roll call?
Sure. Committee on Academic Excellence and Strategic Growth, trustee Stephanie Johnson, trustee Harold Barnes.
Present.
Trustee Chris Evans, and trustee Stephen Friedrich.
Present.
And present.
Everyone is present.
Is this now the time to ask for the motion?
Yes, for the minutes.
Is there a motion um, to put on the floor for the March meeting minutes to be approved?
This is trustee Friedrich. I'll move it.
Trustee Barnes, second.
I'll do the roll call vote for the minutes.
All right.
Sure, for the minutes, trustee Stephanie Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Barnes offered the second, trustee Evans?
Yes.
And trustee Friedrich uh, offered the motion. The minutes are approved.
Thank you. Uh, now I would turn this over to the provost's office or the representative for the updates.
Chair Johnson, I will introduce um, our speaker. Uh, first, I want to acknowledge uh, our provost, Dr. Farah Ward, is unable to be with us today. So we have uh, in place of her, uh, Dr. Gloria Payne, who serves as Associate Vice Chancellor of Academic Affairs. So Dr. Payne, thank you for being here, and I'll turn it over to you for the presentation.
Thank you so much, Chancellor Dixon. Uh, Deanna? As you all know, we are really almost at the end of our SACS reaffirmation uh, process. We had our very successful onsite visit in March, on March the fifteenth through the eighteenth, I mean, very exciting time. We were found in compliance on all of our standards. Of course, this is all preliminary, and the final decision is not made until December uh, during the SAC C O C Board of Trustees meeting. We did get, however, three recommendations on our quality enhancement plan, but this is not unusual. Uh, considering the fact that they didn't see our report until January. Uh, so this was their very first opportunity to review it and give us some feedback. Uh, so we have to send in our response uh, to them uh, on August the eighteenth uh, because we got three recommendations uh, from that report. And we are very confident that we would be able to actually respond successfully to those three recommendations. Once they have received our report on August the eighteenth, uh, then they will vote on our reaffirmation status in the December meeting, and we will know at that time whether or not we are affirmed. And Dr. Ward really wanted to highlight our students and, and to show you how we're actually implementing uh, real life experiences. Uh, so here you see, uh, check the resume. She's talked about check the resume before uh, at prior meetings, but here you can actually see, uh, if you look at the left-hand uh, picture there, you can see one of our music students who's actually there on stage singing. And we also have music majors and the sound recording concentration that they're down, down there running those boards for us. Uh, there's also, if you look on the right-hand side, you'll see a digital uh, media student who's live streaming uh, via Instagram. You can see him down in that left-hand corner uh, with his phone. So this is a great example of, of intersections of disciplines uh, across our academic programs. You have music, uh, you have graphic design and digital media students working together. Uh, we've also expanded, uh, check the resume uh, to work with our community partners. And so on May uh, the twenty-fifth to the tw- through the twenty-seventh, we had some auditions uh, from high school students. We went into the high schools. Uh, the Elizabeth City Pasquotane County Public School System, we partnered with them along with their Channel Eight cable network uh, for this check the resume auditions. So two high schools, Pasquotane and Northeastern High School, were involved, and it was a very successful event. Additional evidence of our real life experiences that we're able to offer our students uh, is shown here uh, with our aviation science program, our, our unmanned aircraft systems and our emergency management students. So what you see here, students are actually involved in uh, conducting a tactical meeting. Uh, they're planning for a drive-through water-food point of distribution, and they're using the K E Y complex uh, for use after a hurricane or other disasters. So they're just planning together these three different disciplines. I hear you actually see them implementing uh, those strategies that they were talking about in the prior uh, slide, uh, the, the left, to the far left slide, you can see them uh, working together on that planning. But I, what I really wanted to highlight was the middle slide, if you look there, you see the young lady who's standing there. She's actually one of our students. Uh, she's also a paramedic, so she's um, providing oversight for those two emergency management students as they are trying to go through resuscitation uh, through simulation. And you can see our, our faculty member in the background there. On the far right picture, you can see on another simulation where they're trying to assist another student with donning this uh, fire retardant suit as he prepares to deal with these hazardous materials. Uh, just another example, you've heard Dr. Ward talk a lot about uh, the documentary filmmaking and with our veterans or history at ECSU. Once again, an intersection of several different uh, academic programs here with history majors, uh, graphic design, and digital media students are working together on this filmmaking. This documentary has been completed, it's uh, fifty-five minutes, and it was an official uh, selection. Um, and we're just so excited that we're able to allow our students to have these real-time experiences and then to, to have these partnerships with the North Carolina Museum of History uh, as well as the Veterans Group in North Carolina. You did receive from Dr. Ward uh, the provost's newsletter, and this was produced by the Seventeen-O-four Media Productions, and this is just an interdisciplinary creative group of people, students and faculty working together. And so you have seen the product uh, of their efforts. And so I just wanted to highlight the, uh, just how interactive uh, this document is. And Deanna's turning the pages, and then she's gone to actually, you can see that students are cleaning, they're cleaning some headstones. I mean, it's really neat. Uh, what we are seeing with this newsletter that was produced by our faculty and students. And as you know, uh, you know, our students went through a lot as we're trying to continue to promote, you know, a, a great academic environment for our students. Uh, during COVID, students have a lot of different experiences. And so we knew and realized that, you know, summer school was going to be extremely important uh, this year for our students. So we were able to provide funding for up to six credit hours uh, for students uh, this summer. This is one of our largest uh, summer school enrollments, and uh, we just wanted students to have a chance to, to actually catch up if they fell behind. Uh, especially our freshman students. Um, a lot of students just can't operate uh, online learning. And then students who want to get ahead, they will also have an opportunity uh, to get ahead this summer. And uh, we actually offered five hundred and ninety-one students um, this type of funding, and it was um, over seven hundred uh, thousand dollars in funding that they received. So recognizing that summer school is, you know, we have a two-five week sessions, and we have uh, an eight-week session, that's a rather quick time for students to gather a lot of information. So what we did uh, this summer was uh, general education and summer school partnered together to create a learning community. And so faculty went through some intensive training so that they would learn how to take a you know, sixteen-week course and make it into actually a five-week course that students could actually learn. So we designed uh, some courses that we knew that freshmen would be taking uh, this summer, and we had an outside consultant to come in and work with that group of faculty. And we had an outside consultant to come in and work with that group of faculty in the learning community. There were 16 faculty that were chosen, but to work with them, to help them, you know, reduce that content into something that is manageable for our students to learn. So we identified faculty navigators who will make sure that they're checking in and have some oversight, watching, watching the progression of students as they go through the five weeks and eight weeks of summer sessions. We've also employed tutors to work with students this summer as well. Also, Dr. Ward has mentioned previously about our certificate programs as we try to expand these programs to make sure that they align with our community demand and meet the needs of employers. So we have actually revised the criteria for certificate programs, making sure that they align with community and employer needs. Prior to this, you know, certificates were created, but they weren't aligning with the needs of our community. So we actually awarded the first certificate in emergency management this year. And in addition, you know, emergency management program is really growing. Students are earning more than 670 third-party credentials. Also, as we expand our national prominence of our aviation program. ECSU is authorized by FAA for reduced airline transport certificate. That's very important, the RAT ATP certificate. Because what it does, it creates a shorter path for students to become airline pilots or chartered captains. So for example, if a student did not graduate with an RATP, our certificate program, it would normally take them 1,500 flight hours to become a pilot. But we reduced that to 1,000 flight hours just because of the RATP. We've also partnered with United Airlines Recruitment Program. And this is going to assist United with meeting their goals of hiring 10,000 pilots over the next decade. And the thing that's really important for us is that they want to make sure that at least 50% of those that have been hired are women and people of color. So our students, for our students, once again, they're going to gain access, direct pathway to becoming first officers. And then there are others, so many benefits with this partnership. And the picture that you see with it to the left, those are our students. The latter part of this presentation is on our enrollment management. And I just wanted you to know that we have a new Assistant Vice Chancellor for Enrollment Management, and that's Mr. James Pennix. And he has oversight of our admissions office, financial aid and our registrar. We also have a new registrar, Carmen Whitfall. And Carmen comes to us actually from Winston-Salem State University. She was an assistant registrar there. And so Mr. Pennix will present to you our enrollment management data.
Thanks, Dr. Payne. Good morning, everyone. Pleased to be here and report the information for the enrollment information for each of you. The first slide you see here is our year and time applied for applied to our confirmed students enrollment data. So you see over the last four years where we've come from and where we are currently today. This information was pulled in from Monday's data report, so not Monday's, over the weekend. So the most up-to-date data information that we have for you. So what you would notice here is like the completed applications gone from 2437 to 4460. That information has a lot to do with the Common Black College application, as you'll see in a later slide. We took on that endeavor last year and it did produce applications and producing some deposit boards as well. The confirmed number total together gone from 552 to apparently right now we're sitting at 571. I think when I checked the numbers this morning, it's 573, so we picked up a few over the last 24 hours. And then we're going to break down the difference between our new freshmen and our transfer in the next two slides. So, Deanna? So this is our new freshman year, similar data from applied to our confirm, which we've adopted deposit. And we're looking at it in relation to last year. Last year, although we all know during the pandemic time, it was a tough year, not only for ECSU, for numerous colleges throughout the Carolinas and throughout the marketplace. And we did have a good year with the confirms at 423 at this point, and now we have 437. I'm one of those folks who's been in this business now for 20 years. And I would say that I like saying confirmed deposit numbers going into the summer, but I'm more excited when I see it come out at census time. Because students in this marketplace have a lot of decisions to make and sometimes they change their minds. So although it looks good and I think people are excited about it, like I said, been at three different schools and knowing how the melt can happen over the summer. So that's good news, but someone like me, it makes me nervous. And let's switch to the transfer and the transfer number is similar. I find that over the last five to 10 years and what's happened in admissions world is a lot of students have gone to the community colleges. So those of us at the four-year school see that transfer is the marketplace we want to be in. And granted, we had a great year at ECSU last year. We ended up at over 200 confirmed students. And currently we sit in, this morning it was at 135, so we're about five behind of the pace last year. So the trend is saying that we're keeping close to that pace. Our goal is to get to 200 transfer students. I would like to see it pick up a lot faster, but as I look over the last few years of data and those trends, it's consistent throughout June and July where we pick up a few each week to get to that number. So we just have to make sure we're putting it, and we are, we're communicating with those students. Completing applications, talking to the students to get them to confirm and ultimately enroll into ECSU. Our last slide that we have here for you, it's really the highlight, I feel like the biggest success and near initiatives from last year was with the Common Black College application in which we see that we got over 2,000 applications by being a part of that group. We've confirmed already 64. In our weekly strategic enrollment strategy meeting, we talk about things that we want to pay attention to this. And we've seen that the Common Black College application is about 15% of our deposits right now. So that's been a success. Okay, that is the last slide. Back to you, Dr. Payne.
That concludes our presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Payne, and thank you to the, and welcome to those new members of Elizabeth City. We're now open for questioning. I have a couple myself. And before I ask my question, I do want to share that it's so exciting to see that SACS report only has three recommendations and that the reaffirmation, I don't know how the people on the trustee board feel or know about this, but accreditation is a big deal. And for them to only have three recommendations, that is the biggest deal ever. So congratulations to those working on those documents because there are tremendous number of documents that go into that. My big question really though is for the idea of enrollment. You know, as we look at the, I appreciate the numbers and the trends that we're seeing. But I guess my first question is, why is there such, always such a gap between the admitted students, which is 2,500? And then you got, you have almost only a fifth of those. There's, it's about a fifth that we see so far. So do you all, do you all have any answers about why such a gap with the admitted and the confirmed?
Adam, thanks for the question, Trustee Johnson. What I've, what I've found is that schools, the more selective you are, the closer that gap is going to be. So you'll see, since I've served three schools and I worked as a consultant, that percentage right there would be an over 20% yield. We call between admitted to the confirm and enroll is pretty high in the last five years. In comparison to previous institution, everyone was moving below 20%. So although the actual numbers here, it just saying is we have to continuously increase our application pool and increase our admitted pool in order to enroll enough students. The other thing that you see happening in the marketplace as well is going to be, students have so many different options. Just look in North Carolina alone, there's really great schools. If they're only looking at HBCUs, they got five options. So if they apply to all five of us, that's going to put us right at that 20% opportunity to enroll those students. So I find that the numbers play out. We just have to make sure we stay in front of them to make sure that that yield rate goes up and stay near 20% and not slip down to what other schools, some private schools are saying in North Carolina, where it's like 10% or 12% yield rate.
And thank you for that answer. And my last question before I open it up to the rest of the committee or the floor is, do you, do you feel because you've been a consultant that the incidents have taken place in Elizabeth City during the last two months will affect our enrollment?
If you're behind it with the right publicity, like we have a lot of great things going on. We just have to make sure that we are putting things forth that the safety concerns that parents may have, that we answer those questions. As a parent of two college students now, that's always my concern. My son went into VCU right after everything was happening in VCU and they were tearing down monuments and it was five blocks from there. What I found as a parent is, I know that I'm giving the right speech to my son and how to be responsible, but is the safety place, safety measures in place on the campus? And that's what's important. So long as we're putting those out, especially when they come here for orientation, those questions are going to be asked. I wouldn't want to be one to have to respond to what is happening outside the gates. But inside the gates, we are taking care of students, students enjoy here, the activities are there, campus safety measures are there. I would say as a consultant, I would give advice to every college that I was consulting at that time. Is get in front of it, make sure that you're saying the message is how you are still student friendly, family first, institution. And these are the things we have for your students. And then families tend to roll back into, I want what's best for my student. So we're a student first, so I think as long as we're doing those right things throughout the summer, we'll be okay.
I love those responses, especially the example you gave your son, because it has been pretty quiet down there. They've been really peaceful, so I'm just hoping that doesn't have an effect on our enrollment. Thank you. Now open the floor up to the rest of the committee or any questions that you might have.
Chair Johnson?
Yes.
I would like to make just a clarification for our listeners. In regards to our SACC OC progress that we've made for reaffirmation, there were no recommendations for our compliance report, no recommendations for our compliant report or for our meeting the SACC OC standards. The three recommendations were only for the quality enhancement plan. And so I commend our team led by our provost and all who contributed to our SACC OC report. But we are so proud, as you said, Chair Johnson, of the progress that we've made in this process. And we will know about reaffirmation at the December meeting. But I just wanted to clarify, no findings, no recommendations for our compliance report or meeting our standards. The three recommendations were only for the quality enhancement plan, which is an additional component. But the overall was no findings at all, so thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any more questions?
Just a comment, Chair Johnson, just spectacular on SACS. And we saw that this was happening throughout the process. So it's a wonderful, wonderful outcome and in recognition of a lot, a lot of hard work. And also just kudos, Dr. Payne, to you and provost and the staff on the virtual news magazine. That's outstanding, really outstanding. I hope that can get out into the public a little bit too, because that tells a lot about our story. So I just wanted to mention that. Thank you for the opportunity, Chair Johnson.
Thank you. Anyone else?
This is Trustee Barnes. I also would like to say kudos to the provost and her staff. And the overall upgrade in quality and everything that they're doing over there is just outstanding. And six years ago, we would always, whenever we asked the question of a staff member at the university, they would always say, "We're getting ready to." And we're in an era right now where we can continue to say we're doing and we're pushing those boundaries and increasing the quality of our university. And that's in no small part, thanks to the provost, but more than that, thanks to the leadership at the top. And so thank you all very much for all of the great work that you're doing.
Thank you. Anyone else? Comments or questions?
Hello, my name is Tiffany Jones and I'm new and just want to say hello and thanks for having me. And just appreciated, I joined late, but already reading and hearing all the great work that's happening. I had just one really quick follow-up question related to the comment that was brought up around kind of responding to events that have happened in the area and how that might impact enrollment. And just had a follow-up related to the student perspective. I know you had a great, great response related to how parents and families might be feeling about safety and security, but also students' perception of the university and their support of them and how they, some have, you know, via social media or otherwise call that into question. And kind of some of the strategies you all have been thinking about in terms of how to engage your students who might have some of the perception and make sure that they, they know about all the good opportunities at the university.
Thank you and welcome.
Thank you for having me.
Anyone else?
I will, I will add a little something to the question that was just asked. So first, welcome, Trustee Jones. We are very happy that you are part of the board. So thank you so much for being here today and thank you so much for the question. We are working closely with our student body president, Jimmy Chambers, who is a member of the Board of Trustees. As well as what was very effective last summer are, is the fact that we had two virtual town hall meetings over the summer. And so we plan to structure those virtual town hall meetings for prospective incoming students during the summer to talk about some of these things, to reassure parents that ECSU is a safe environment and that we're working closely with the city, we're working closely with the county to make sure that students will be welcomed into our campus community in August very successfully. And we are also integrating, and you may hear this in the next committee from Dr. Gary Brown, but he and his staff as Vice Chancellor for Student Affairs, they're also working to integrate some of this dialogue and conversation during our orientations that we're going to have this summer on campus as well. So we're pushing our good news stories out there, we're answering questions. Bottom line is we want to be as transparent as possible for our students' respective families and our incoming and returning students and their families. And so this is something that we're going to be very intentional about and that we're going to really make sure that we're providing accurate information to our campus community in that regard so that everyone understands, A, is aware of what is occurring in the city, but B, also understands how we're working together as a community and how we want to welcome the students back in a successful way.
Thank you. Anyone else? Then without objection, we will stand adjourned. Thank you again.
Thank you, Chair Johnson. I would like to welcome, on behalf of the board, Trustee Tiffany Jones. I love that our two trustees, two of our trustees have already jumped in and got started. So you were absolutely, all of the three trustees that we have had join us this morning were selected because we knew that you had already started before the meeting started. So you've all evidenced that and we thank you. I do have a point of order I'd like to bring up to the board before we go on to our next committee meeting. I have sent all of you information regarding our closed session topic. I have information that several of our board members will not be able to be with us this afternoon. So depending upon the time that we have, I would like to go into our topic, closed session topic during our committee. So depending upon the time that we have, I would like to go into our topic, closed session topic during our committee meeting. And we are procedurally allowed to do that as the governing, as the university governance committee. So if you can hang with me, I don't know if anybody else had plans not to be with us, but we have a quorum. And so if our time permits, and I need at least an hour, maybe a little more, is Chair Brown and Chair Barnes coming up? Just to know that that's what we're going to try to do since we have a hefty topic. So I thank you and no further ado, Chair Brown, if you'd like to begin your committee.
Good morning, Madam Chair. You know it's dangerous to tell the pastor he has a limited amount of time.
I know it is, but please pray in for you.
But if, I'm fine if you need to circumvent our committee meeting and go now, that's, that's up to you. I will yield to that. We can, I will be here this afternoon, so it does not matter for me.
All right, let me ask Attorney Goodson, can I move governance ahead?
No, you cannot. We put the meeting schedule out, so we have to adhere to that.
Okay, but if I happen to be able to start before eleven fifteen, I can do that?
Start before the posted time either.
All right, well, Chair Brown, take your time and we'll see what happens at eleven fifteen. Thank you for keeping us honest, Attorney Goodson. All righty, your floor, Chair Brown.
Well, I want to share, we'll have three components to our committee meeting report. And so we will be sensitive to time. I'm asking our presenters to be sensitive to the time. But we are excited about the information that we're going to share and welcome as well to our new trustee leadership. Thank you for joining us. We look forward to working with you. As Chair of the committee, I want to remind everyone that we will be conducting today's meeting pursuant to the new amendments to the Open Meetings Act that apply during states of emergency. The amendments were signed into law and allow for public bodies to meet via electronic means, which we do today. The new law does require, however, that we take all votes via roll call, which we will also do today. Additionally, pursuant to the amendments to the law, all chats, instant messages, texts or other written communications between members of the board regarding the transaction of the public business during the remote meeting are deemed a public record. Finally, I will ask all committee members, board members and participating staff to please identify yourself before participating in deliberations, including making motions, proposing amendments and raising points of order. Also, as Chair of this committee, it is my responsibility to remind all members of the board of their duty, according to the State Government Ethics Act, to avoid conflicts of interest and appearances of conflict of interest as required by this act. Each member has received the agenda and related information for this Board of Trustees Committee meeting. And if any board member knows of any conflict of interest or appearance of conflict with respect to any matter coming before the Board of Trustees at this meeting, the conflict or appearance of conflict should be identified at this time. Right, hearing none, the chair will entertain a motion. In fact, first of all, I'm sorry, Ms. Gwen, if you would, call the roll, please.
Sure. Committee on Student Excellence, Trustees Kim Brown. So it's Bosomworth. Jimmy Chambers. Great. Jimmy Chambers.
Present.
Stephanie Johnson.
Present.
And Tracy Swain.
Present.
Everyone is in attendance, sir.
Outstanding. With that, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of March eight, twenty twenty-one.
So moved. Stephanie Johnson.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, multiple seconds. I hope you got it, Ms. Gwen.
Yes.
I'll let you choose whichever you desire.
Roll call vote for the minutes. Trustee Brown.
Yes.
Trustee Bosomworth offered the second. Trustee Chambers.
Yes.
Trustee Johnson offered the motion and Trustee Swain.
Yes.
The minutes stand approved. Thank you.
Outstanding. For the board, we have three updates this morning. Really excited about all three of them. We believe they are extremely valuable information. So we'll start with Dr. Gary Brown, Vice Chancellor for Student Affairs. Then we will go to our AD, Mr. George Bright. And we will finish with our SGA President, the Honorable Jimmy Chambers.
Chair Brown?
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to propose that we move Trustee Jimmy Chambers to the first report. He has another commitment. So if you don't mind, if we could have him go first and then we will take Dr. Brown after that, please.
Outstanding. All right, Trustee Jimmy Chambers, it is, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Chancellor Dixon. All right, so I'm glad to be back once again for our final year. I'm going to be the student body president for this academic year. The goals for this year are practically the same as last year, where it is to amplify the student voice, activism, inclusion and to ultimately improve the collegiate experience. One thing that we've done so far already is put out a survey that gives constructive feedback on how SGA operated this past year. Constructive criticism is something that I love. It helps me become a better and effective leader. So to hear what my peers have to say, how they feel that SGA did this year and as well as some things that they would love for us to advocate for this coming year as well will help us be successful in so many ways. Advocacy. So students did attend the peaceful protesting around the death of Andrew Brown. You can see our Mr. Senior, our Mr. Elizabeth City State University as well, no more problem. We also have Mr. Tyreek Slaughter, who serves as the Mr. Junior, Mr. Sophomore, I'm sorry, this past academic year. And we also have some brothers from Beta Zeta who went out there as well. This year, the executive board consists of, for Vice President of Internal Affairs is Shania Moore. Vice President of External Affairs would be Paige Williams. Vice President of Finance would be Sidney Platter. Vice President of Student Activities, which is equivalent to the cab president, would be Mr. Quentin Williams. Attorney General once again would be Angel Otsadon. Corresponding Secretary would be Jalen Greer. Recording Secretary would be Jayquan Blackledge. Miss Elizabeth City State University is Diamond Rawlinson. And Mr. Elizabeth City State University is Joshua Cox. And any questions for me? No?
All right. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you for your leadership.
Oh. Go ahead, Trustee Bosomworth. Bosomworth, I have something I need to say before Trustee Chambers leaves the meeting. So I'm sorry, go ahead, Trustee Bosomworth.
I'm sorry as well. I just wanted to say what a great job I think he's done and we appreciate him so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy. Delighted you've been reelected.
Chancellor?
Thank you. Okay, thank you so much, Chair Brown. I have a special presentation this morning. I would like to give you all some insight that Trustee Chambers, our student body president and trustee, has been named a 2020 Campus Compact Newman Civic Fellow. And the Newman Civic Fellowship recognizes and supports community committed students who are change makers and public problem solvers at the Campus Compact Member Institutions. Fellows are nominated by their chancellor or president and based on their potential for public leadership. Through the fellowship, Campus Compact provides students with a year-long training and resources that nurture their assets and passions and help them develop strategies for social change. So I am quite honored to be able to present to our student body president and trustee, Mr. Jimmy Chambers, the 2020 Campus Compact Newman Civic Fellow. And congratulations, the certificate that you will receive and Deputy Sanders is holding that up for everyone to see. It reads Jimmy Chambers, Elizabeth City State University, in recognition of your civic leadership and your dedication to finding solutions for challenges in the communities where you live, serve and learn. Signed by Dr. Katherine Conway Turner, Chair of the Board of Directors, and Dr. Andrew J. Sills John, President of Campus Compact. Congratulations, Trustee Jimmy Chambers, on receiving this honor. We are so proud of you.
Thank you all. And Chairwoman Robinson, I will try my best to rejoin for the closed session. If someone can, just send me a text message and I will do my best to rejoin.
Will do that, Jimmy. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you, y'all. Have a good day.
Outstanding. Thank you, sir. All right, we'll continue.
All right, so, yes, thank you. So good, good morning to each of you, to Chairman Robinson, Chancellor Dixon and Committee Chair Brown. Thank you for allowing me to provide an update on behalf of the Division of Student Affairs here at Elizabeth City State University. During our time this morning, I will share with you a year in review, share with you our kind of ending COVID-19 data, some information related to the student experience on our campus this year, as well as some highlights from this past year as well. I'll also provide you some information related to what's happening within the Division of Student Affairs this summer, focusing on new student orientation and the Student Affairs Professional Development Series, some updates on year one progress. And then we'll close out with a very brief multimedia presentation related to some snapshots from this year. From a COVID-19 perspective, of course, COVID-19 has impacted our work here on the campus greatly. But I'm pleased to report that we have successfully made it through an academic year. During this year, every department has been very active, but in particular, Student Health Services. During the fall semester and the spring semester, actually facilitated over four thousand COVID tests on our campus. In the fall, we had fifty-two positives. And in the spring of 2021, we only had forty-two. So we had a total of ninety-four positive cases on our campus. And I think that's to be celebrated. That's a two-point-two-seven percentage point positivity rate. And then we had, we serviced three hundred and seventy-four additional individuals within our Student Health Services this year for non-COVID-related things. I'd like to share with you that we had one march in particular where we had zero positive cases on our campus. And we had facilitated eight hundred and fifty-four students being tested during that timeframe. From a housing and residential life perspective, we actually ended our year with seventy-five percent overall occupancy throughout this year, which speaks a lot to the value that students believe there is in living on our campus and the ability of our staff to ensure that our residence halls are safe. As of today, we actually had eight hundred and three applications for housing in the fall semester. And so we are trending towards our goal of housing one thousand and twenty-three students within our residence hall facilities. And this has been really helped in, in, in some ways by the housing and meal grants that have been provided to each students that are part of our Viking Plus program, which are these strategic initiatives that are designed to help to defray the cost of attendance here at ECSU. So every student who actually lives on our campus in the fall semester will receive fifteen hundred dollars towards their housing and/or meal plan on our campus. And then just last week, we actually expanded the program to also include the waiving of housing application fees as well. And so we know that we're going to be full come fall semester and we are excited about that opportunity. From a counseling services perspective, there's been much made around mental health services and the impact on mental health of our students during this pandemic and everything that's gone on over the last year and a half or so. There were actually four hundred and seven student sessions that were facilitated on our campus from a counseling services perspective. And that was done by one-point-five full-time employees, which is a very, very kind of high rate. And so we are excited about the fact that the Board of Governors has approved our ask for a thirty-dollar increase to our student health fee. Because that fee, excuse me, that fee will help us to defray the cost of hiring an additional full-time employee. From a workforce development perspective, Project Gap, which is our workforce development initiative that's funded by the Golden Leaf Foundation, we have actually facilitated twenty-eight workshops, both in-person and virtual. We actually have a summer camp that's being facilitated for potential participants and participants of our program. It's been held on our campus actually starting today. And right now, we're at a total number of participants to date at forty. Our goal is fifty-five by the time we get to the new year. And then we will start again with an additional fifty-five participants for the coming year. Want to provide you an update related to our Community Connections Performance and Lecture Series, which was very well attended during this past school year. Ninety-eight percent of respondents to the surveys who have attended our lecture series provided positive feedback related to the series and the individualized events. And this has really been really impactful for us is that by having the, the type of names that we have had involved in our performance and lecture series, we've actually received about sixty thousand dollars since this same time on last year from the Duke Energy Foundation, First Citizens Bay, the National Endowment of the Arts, and then also personal gifts. There's an additional twenty-five thousand dollars that is in the pipeline and is actually provided from Microsoft. As our last speaker was Mr. Fred Humphries, who's the Vice President for Microsoft and actually has already worked us into the budget line for the coming year. From a student conduct and community standards perspective, we facilitated fourteen conduct programs, thirty classroom presentations. There were thirty-seven voter and civic engagement events that were coordinated from the office and actually resolved two hundred and fifty-eight of three hundred student conduct cases with the remaining forty-two just having pending sanctions to complete. This is a huge number for us. As on our ride in 2018, we actually had a backlog of conduct cases. And so we are not in that same place any longer. We have staff who work very, very diligently to ensure that we address issues as they arise on our campus. From a campus recreation perspective, you can see there the average weekly attendance that of students in our facilities, once we opened them up. And then you can also see there some highlights from our Office of Title IX related to the launching of a mobile safety app and a twenty-four-hour hotline. All of those provided through grant funds received from the Governor's Crime Commission. Our Military and Veteran Affairs Office has been reaffirmed again as being one of the very best and has serviced over a hundred military or military affiliated students during this year. And as a highlight, in the spring semester, actually collaborated with Columbia University to sponsor a Green Zone Training, which ensures that our campus is equipped at how to service our, our service members and their family members when they come to our campus. From a student accessibility and testing services perspective, we actually accommodated or served or assisted approximately a hundred students this past year for documented disabilities and/or COVID needs. And so I'm sharing this information with you because I want you to have a real good picture of everything that's gone on on our campus this year. I do believe that there are sometimes some perspectives that in this COVID year, there hasn't been much going on. And I have a staff who has worked extremely hard to ensure that our students are serviced and engaged. And I wanted to share that information with you, just so you have some perspective on just how active our campus has actually been even in the midst of the pandemic. For this summer, we will host our very first new student orientation session, June sixteenth to the seventeenth. We are planning for it to be an overnight experience. It will be open to students and guests and re-entry testing documentation is required. And COVID-19 protocols will And COVID-19 protocols will be in place based upon where it is that we are as an institution at that time. The Chancellor has already talked to you briefly about our new student orientation program and how we will certainly tackle some of the questions that people may have around what it's like to be here as a student or a family member within our community and provide our students an opportunity to be oriented to our campus so that we can get them excited about being a part of this Viking family. Also, this summer, the Student Affairs staff will facilitate for the very first time our own professional development series, which includes topics around strengthening the assessment of our programs and services, challenging the status quo in terms of the work that we do, understanding and being responsive to the diverse needs of our campus community, the accountability that comes with being a leader. And then also, we'll facilitate mental health first aid training so that our staff may be equipped to address needs as they might arise from our students. An update on our strategic plan goals that we've been updating throughout this year. We've been tracking student participation in clubs and organizations. You can see there, there were a total of 309 virtual, in-person, and hybrid programs that were facilitated this year, and we use very heavily the Vikings Engage app, which I'd like to share with you now that our Vikings Engage app has really been doing some great work. Over 93,468 app opens have occurred since we launched the app in January of 2019. And that number of times, the average number of times a user has actually opened the app is right around 77 times since the launch in 2019. Additionally, from January to December of 2020, we had 405,367 app opens. And 189 of those were a user who actually opened the app for the first time. And there are additional numbers here related to viewing of resources and what that has meant for us as a campus community. Like you to see the number there from January to December of 2021, which we have not gotten to December 2021, but we actually have 21,063 times the resources have been viewed within the app, which speaks a lot to the fact that our campus community is very engaged and is utilizing the Vikings Engage app quite well as we move throughout. So, there are additional items here, but you all have already received this information, but I wanted to share that with you as we move forward. The second update is related to alumni engagement and career development. We actually engaged alumni in nine separate sessions throughout this year in programs that were presented virtually to students. And you can see there a nice list of organizations that were represented by alums who actually interfaced with our students during this year. And I'd like to highlight also the high-profile internship opportunities that are provided. The state provides several, and there are also some national programs that are listed here as well. We had two of our ECSU students who were selected to be a part of the Governor's Internship Program. Last year, we were actually at zero, and so, this is really something to celebrate. We actually filled all 20 of our slots that are provided to us from the State Employees Credit Union Internship Fellows Program. We placed four Thurgood Marshall Scholars, which is great. And then we also have five students selected by the North Carolina Department of Transportation for the HBCU MSI Internship Program. And so, the staffing career development is doing very well. And as we move forward, because career readiness is the focus of our Quality Enhancement Plan, the staffing in that particular area will grow. We're actually in the process of posting and making a permanent hire for Director of the Career Development Center and the Quality Enhancement Plan. And along with that will come three additional career advisors who will staff that office and allow us to have more interaction, direct ties to academic units. And we're working intently to refine the Quality Enhancement Plan and to address the recommendations that were given by the On-Site Committee in March. From a funding update perspective related to the strategic plan, we're seeking additional funding support for needs around student services. Our five-year goal was actually to seek $2 million. We actually, this year, have sought about $707,000. We've garnered $156,000, but we have some very heavy asks that are still out. One from the Governor's Crime Commission in the amount of $185,000. One from the U.S. Department of Education for $231,000. And I'm told that there is likely an announcement on the My Future NC Grant, $25,000 for this week. So, please be on the lookout for that. We gave an update during our last meeting on our campus climate survey, and we're continuing to use this information to inform our practices. You all will see more about this as we move forward with intentional programming related to Viking Race, which is a program we developed after receiving the funding from the Z. Smith Reynolds Foundation. This year, I want to kind of end on this note and show you a few pictures here that are highlighted on this slide. But also, I want to show you a very brief video that we used to kind of kick off our Leadership Retreat just a few weeks ago with our Student Affairs Leadership Team. And it really highlights a lot of the great work that has happened and the message that was given to them then. And after that, we will be ready to transition for questions.
Vice Chancellor Brown, did I see our Chair, Dan King Robinson, in that picture doing yoga?
Yes, ma'am. You sure did. We did. Right, our Chair actually facilitated a yoga session for, I believe that was for our Sister to Sisters mentorship group. So, we're really excited about her doing that.
Thank you, Chair. That's wonderful.
It was a pleasure. Thank you.
All right, here we go.
Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion is all around us. Just look behind me. Big boats, little boats, long boats, and short boats. We can't escape them. So, as we move forward, we adapt to this new academic year. I challenge each of you to be diverse in the thoughts, diverse in the student programming, and also be inclusive. Also, remember that the impact that we have on our students is to help them realize that this is the beginning of the rest of their lives. Viking pride.
Vikings are warriors. This last year has shown us how creative and innovative we can be to do the work of our unit, for our students, and for our institution. If we do not tether ourselves to merely one dock or tell ourselves that all we can do is travel along one river, we have to look at our own record and try to break that record ourselves. We are ever only in competition with ourselves. So, we have to push and move beyond that which we have set to set new boundaries, new limits, and break more records. In the water, the buoy is merely a navigation mark. It is not the limit, and it is not a stopping point. It is up to us as Vikings, who are explorers, to move beyond that, to continue to seek new levels, to use that as a guiding point. We are explorers. We are warriors. We are waymakers. We are Vikings.
Wow, we've made it. We've made it through one more academic year. This has been a year like no other. It's kind of reminded me of a river. Knowing a river, you always have to navigate the unknown. At times, the river runs fast. Sometimes it runs slow, but you've got to be willing to go with the flow. And then even at other times, you know, the river has some rough patches, some things that you have to endure. So proud of you all for all the things that you have accomplished this year. And I'm really excited about the things that we'll do in the coming year. So, for these next two days, let's take some time to reflect upon all of our accomplishments, to reconsider some of the things that we've done to this point, and to renew our commitment to navigating this landscape of higher education and the work we do in Student Affairs, just like we would do always in navigating the river. It's my hope, and it is my prayer for each and every one of you that you know how much we really appreciate just how much you bring to Elizabeth City State University, how much you impact the lives of our students, and how much you add to the student experience. For these next days, I want to encourage you to step off the riverbank and to dream about all the possibilities that exist for the time to come.
So, Committee Chair Brown, at this point, that concludes my report.
Thank you so much, sir. I don't know if you all felt like this, but I feel like I need to take up an offering after Dr. Brown ended us by the river. I felt like we had been in church. So, sir, thank you so much. Before we open the floor for questions, that was a lot that was shared. So, thank you, first of all, just for the work that you're doing. But I want to bring the attention of the board to one statistic that Dr. Garrett Brown shared with us. 407 student counseling sessions. I know in the last trustee meeting, Dr. Stephanie Johnson asked about how are we helping young people navigate through COVID and all this? I can tell you that is phenomenal. And to do that with one point, I think it says one point, one and a half FTEs. So, one and a half people did that. That is just amazing. It shows the impact that we are tangibly having with young people. So, sir, once again, thank you. All right, finally, A.D. Bright is going to come and share with us the Department of Athletics update. You know, since our last trustees meeting, one of the great Vikings, you know, I'm sure he'll talk about Coach Vaughn. I was just blown away when I did research to find out that he became the head coach at Elizabeth City State University at the age of 21. So, that is phenomenal. So, A.D. Bright, it's on you, sir.
Well, thank you, Trustee Brown. I'd certainly appreciate it. Chancellor Dixon, distinguished members of the Board of Trustees, and of course, this committee member, all the committee members and all of our in-virtual attendance. Good morning. I am George Bright, and I am blessed to serve as your Director of Athletics, and I thank you for the opportunity to present to you on behalf of the Department of Athletics. I would like to also extend a special Viking pride welcome to the new board members that are with us today. Today's athletics update will consist... Today's athletic update will consist of four things we'll talk about. As Trustee Brown mentioned, Robert Vaughn, the name, image, and likeness update, our Fall 2021 Return to Action information, and social media reminders. So, Robert Vaughn passed away on May 5th of 2021 in Charlotte, North Carolina. He was born January 19, 28 in Petersburg, Virginia, to Pearl M. Vaughn, Sarah Short Vaughn. He was predeceased by his parents and his wife for 56 years. As Trustee Brown mentioned, at the age of 21, he was named the head basketball coach here at Elizabeth City State University. He also earned Coach of the Year accolades in the Eastern Intercollegiate Athletic Conference. During his 33-year tenure, Bobby Vaughn earned four EIAC, five CIAA Divisional Championships, and two CIAA Tournament Crowns. His squads amassed 502 NCAA-certified victories. His teams advanced to the National Playoffs seven times, winning three district championships in the NAIA, advancing to the NAIA National Championship Final four times, and won the NCAA Division II South Atlantic Championship once, advancing to the final eight. As Director of Athletics, he aligned ECSU with the CIAA. He established an 11-sports program for men and women. Vaughn was elected President of the CIAA during a pivotal stage in the CIAA's history. As a tribute to his leadership, the CIAA named Vaughn a Lifetime Honorary President and later presented him the prestigious CIAA Living Legend Award. Vaughn has been inducted into the following Halls of Fame: the NC, the North Carolina Sports Hall of Fame, the National Association of Collegiate Directors of Athletics Hall of Fame, the CIAA Hall of Fame, Virginia State's Hall of Fame, and of course, Elizabeth City State University Sports Hall of Fame. He has won numerous awards throughout his career and has been honored by groups and organizations all over the United States, including, but not limited to, the News and Observers Tar Heel of the Week, the North Carolina Governor's Award, the Order of the Longleaf Pine. He's commissioned an honorary Kentucky Colonel and the National Basketball Coaches Association's Merit Award. He is one of three coaches, college coaches in North Carolina to have a building to be named in his honor while still living. Coach Vaughn served in the North Carolina Sports Hall of Fame, on the North Carolina Sports Hall of Fame Board of Directors for six years, two years of those being as Board President. A memorial service for Coach Vaughn will be on June 19, 2021, in the R.L. Vaughn Center. This will begin at 10:30 with special presentations by Omega Psi Phi Fraternity Incorporated and the Links Organization. Excuse me. The memorial service will begin at 11:00 a.m., of course, here in the Vaughn Center. Coach Vaughn leads to cherish his memory his two daughters, Michelle and Zoe, his son Bobby Jr., their spouses, and a host of grandchildren, great-grandchildren, nieces, nephews, cousins, basketball players, students, and friends. Trustee Brown, Chancellor Dixon, at this time, I ask that we allow for a moment of silence in reflection of our legend, Robert Vaughn. Thank you so much. Okay, moving forward. In our continued efforts of the NCAA Name, Image, and Likeness information that's there, most simply, name, image, and likeness are three elements that make up a legal concept known as right of publicity. The right of publicity involves those situations where permission is required of a person to use their name, image, and likeness. In Division II, in general, student athletes may participate in promotional activities not related to athletics, including promoting or endorsing commercial products or services. Our athletes may be paid for participating in these activities under certain conditions. As an example, when payment is not based on the individual's involvement in athletics. So, across all divisions in the NCAA, Division I, II, III, there are several exceptions that allow the use of a student athlete's NIL, name, image, or likeness in promotional activities. name, image, or likeness in promotional activities. These include charitable, educational, or nonprofit promotions, media activities, national governing body promotions, and camp and congratulatory advertisements. You know, we are dedicated to building a championship culture here, and a significant step in the journey is adhering in letter and in spirit to the NCAA, the CIA, and institutional rules and regulations that govern our intercollegiate program. Our next slide talks about our return to fall action. In front of you is the two thousand twenty-one football schedule. It's in your packets. Just want to highlight a few dates that are here. Saturday, September fourth, of course, is our Down East Viking Football Classic in Rocky Mount. Our first home game is Saturday, September eleventh, against Bluefield State College. Then we travel to Norfolk State at six o'clock. We'll see you there, Bishop. Seth, September twenty-fifth, at Winston-Salem State. Our next home game is October second against Livingston. And then you see October ninth against Virginia State at Virginia State. The sixteenth of October at Lincoln. Homecoming, October twenty-three, against Chawan University. That's our seventy-fifth. And then we wrap the season up at home, Saturday, October thirtieth, against Virginia Union University, which will be our senior day. And then our, our trip on the road on November sixth is at Bowie State. And then the CIA championship is the following week. In your packets is a preliminary schedule for the Down East Viking Classic. There will be things added to this accordingly. In the return to action, the Athletic Trainers Association has recommended a two-pronged approach and process that we are, we will follow. This will be updated, of course, as the CDC provides more information. So schools that have VAC mandates, those that have a vaccination mandate, we will, in declaration of the status prior to the season, a requirement to stick with that process will be through that season. So those schools in our conference that have a vaccination mandate will follow this line. And those schools without a vaccination mandate will follow the second line. We will test as the NCAA requires. An attestation requirements will be based upon those new recommendations and the tests that follow. This will probably remain on a game-by-game basis or potentially weekly updates depending on the new guidelines that come out from the CDC the next couple of weeks for sports risks and their testing requirements. So again, schools are fasting, they're looking at it from a lens of two. One lens, schools with VAC mandates follow one protocol. Those schools without VAC mandates follow the second protocol. And finally, I'd like to talk to you about information regarding the do's and don'ts on social media, what's permissible and what's not permissible. Okay? So again, we intend to aid and provide information in the understanding of this basic principle of social media as we seek the highest level of ethical standards and conduct. This is also in your board packets. So things that are permissible, you can follow, friend, or add a prospective student athlete or the prospective student athlete's coach or team. You can do that. You can send a private or direct message, but only after the first permissible date. Only after, that's the key to that. You could also post Elizabeth City State University-related photos, scores, events, recordings, highlights from games and practices. Yes, you can do that. You can also post generic good luck messages. Good luck to the teams in the two-five-two or the seven-five-seven that are in championships this weekend. You can do that. You can post specific messages of your child competing or congratulating your child. Or general messages not related to athletics to coaches like happy birthday or get well. You can do those things. But I want to call your attention to the impermissibles. What you must be aware, please do not add, do not text, or add text, or hashtag, or provide emojis when taking actions of approval. Please do not take actions of approval on an original tweet from a prospective student athlete, a coach, or team. When an action can be a like, or a favorite, or a retweet. We ask you to not communicate publicly with a prospective student athlete, and that would be to comment or to like, before signing or before the PSA posts a video, photos, not offering congratulations to a PSA or coach. So no congratulations, no photos, and if you don't mind. And also, please be careful not to like, or favorite, or retweet anything from a scouting service or from those associated with one. It's a very important one. And again, as we always say, it's best to contact me or the Athletic Compliance Office, Mr. Moens is on the screen, and ask before, and ask before you act. It's an important aspect as we continue to try to keep everything where it needs to be. So therefore, on behalf of our student athletes, excuse me, and staff, I want to thank you for your continued interest in the Department of Athletics. Your support remains the cornerstone to our success. Thank you. May I entertain any questions at this time?
All right, if there are no questions without objection, our committee stands adjourned.
Thank you very much, Chair Brown. We will now move right into our Committee on Operational Excellence, Chair Harold Barnes. You have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to call to order the Committee on Operational Excellence at this time. As a, as Chair of the committee, I want to remind everyone that we will be conducting today's meeting pursuant to the new amendments to the Open Meetings Act that apply during states of emergency. The amendment was signed into law and allow for public bodies to meet their electronic means. The new law does require, however, that we take all votes via roll call, which we will do today. Additionally, pursuant to the amendments to the law, all chats, instant messages, texts, or other written communications between members of the board regarding the transaction of the public business during the remote meeting are deemed a public record. Finally, I will ask all committee members, board members, and participating staff to please identify yourself before participating in deliberations, including making motions, proposing amendments, and raising points of order. As Chair of, as Chair of the Committee on Operational Excellence, it is my responsibility to remind all members of the board of their duty under the state government's Ethics Act to avoid conflicts of interest and appearance of conflict, interest as required by this act. Each member has received the agenda and related information for this Board of Trustees Committee meeting. If any board member knows of any conflict of interest or appearance of conflict with respect to any matter coming before the Board of Trustees at this meeting, the conflict or appearance of conflict should be identified at this time. Hearing none, I've asked the deputy to call the roll.
The Committee on Operational Excellence, Trustee Harold Barnes.
Yeah.
Trustee Phyllis Bosenworth.
Present.
Trustee Jimmy Chambers. Trustee Tracy Swain.
Present.
And Trustee Kenneth Wilkins, who is not here. You do have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of our last meeting of March eighth, twenty twenty-one, if you have no corrections?
Phyllis Bosenworth, so move.
Tracy Swain, second.
Call the roll, please.
Roll call for the minutes. Trustee Barnes.
Aye.
Trustee Bosenworth offered the motion, and Trustee Swain offered the second. The motion, the minutes stand approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll move into informational update. We have no action items on the agenda for today. And so we'll start with Ms. Anya Hola, Director of Facilities and Planning.
Good morning, everyone. We have a short presentation for today, so in the interest of time, I'll just run through our presentation.
Ms. Hola, are you able to show your?
Yes, can you see my screen?
No. Oh, well, now I can. Yes, thank you.
So this is our infrastructure update for June of twenty twenty-one. We have completed Bias Hall construction, the demolition of Hugh Kill and Dole's. We've completed construction at Moore Hall and your little library. And for all, all of those three projects, we're just continuing to do some final punch list items. There are small items like doorknobs that need adjustment, those types of things. We do plan on having a full opening later in the semester. And if any board member would like to visit either of those sites, please get in contact with V.C. Goodson.
Anya, it may be helpful to put your presentation in presentation mode and go with the slides as well.
Click from the beginning. There. Oh, well.
Sorry, no.
That's okay. I can.
Can you see my screen again?
Not yet. Do you want me to?
And you both do the.
I can.
Standards.
Okay.
Can you all see my screen?
Uh, yeah.
Yes, we can see your screen. If you do the icons.
Yes, just go from the beginning.
If you go to the icon in the bottom right, it will start your presentation mode. You see the icon there next to the zoom.
Perhaps I'm missing something.
Right there. Yep. Begin presentation. You were just hovering over. Press that.
So you don't see, do you see it now?
We do, but it may be helpful. Quinn, you may just want to share your screen.
Let me see if I can pull that up. Okay. Do you see my screen?
Yes, actually, you know what, Quinn? Um, go ahead.
Is that okay?
Yes.
Okay.
So are we moving through it or?
Yep, next slide, Quinn.
Yeah, it's not moving. Okay, there we go. I'm sorry. I had a little delay.
So like I said, we've completed construction at Bias and demolished Hugh Kill and Dole's. Next slide, please. You can, next slide. Next slide. Next slide. Next slide, sorry. So we have, we're in the midst of the installation of our eight-hundred-ton chiller project. This project, we've received both our chiller and our cooling tower, and we expect completion of this project end of June. Next slide, please. These are some images of the chiller and cooling tower as they were being installed. Next slide. Our Dorian roof projects, we've received approval. We've bid the projects out, and we are starting construction this summer. Next slide. Phase one of the Dorian roof projects includes Viking Village University Tower, Jimmy Jenkins Science Building, and Thorpe. We have a phase two project, which we're, right now, we are still waiting for SEO approval on those drawings, and we're going to begin bidding those this month. And phase two includes STEM, McLendon, Griffin, ITC, Vaughn Center, Trig, and Dixon Hall. Next slide. Our HVAC controls, our project, our HVAC project consisted of two phases. Phase one was our controls upgrade, and phase two is also controls for Moore Hall, but we have another phase, which is University Tower and Viking Tower. So in the controls upgrade, we've completed Griffin, McLendon, Lane, Fine Arts Student Center, and K.E. White. Those buildings are now within our, we have control over them remotely. And we expect to complete STEM, Thorpe, ITC, Bedell, and Vaughn Center this summer. We also have a second phase to bring Moore Hall onto, onto our remote control system. Next slide. The second project is our four-million-dollar upgrade of HVAC equipment. And our first phase is Viking Tower and University Tower. And like I said, we are waiting for, we've received approval for bidding on those, and we expect to do bidding June. Next slide. Our second, our second phase of our HVAC equipment upgrades is Williams Hall, Jenkins Science, and University Suites. And those buildings are being reviewed by SEO right now. Next slide. Our, we also had a pretty major project at the Vaughn Center this summer, which included some work in the pool. So all of the items here were, were completed that have the checkmark, and the items that are still in progress are some plumbing repairs. The new diving boards need to be installed and replacing the chemical system that controls the pool cleaning. Next slide. This is some images of the before and after of Vaughn. Next. And we have also put out to bid our RFP for our master plan. And we've received a lot of interest from firms all over North Carolina, so we're excited about that. And we'll be reaching out to our trustee members and the committee for assistance narrowing down that list once our solicitation closes. Next slide. So that completes our presentation. If there are any questions, we're open for them. Thank you.
Any questions? If not, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Moving on to information and technology. Dr. Wilkins?
Good afternoon. Good morning. One announcement for information technology. We have a resignation, Shereesh McGugan. He resigned to return home, to his home state. And so we have appointed Eric Lagarmy to serve as our interim Chief Information Officer. Eric, if you would say hello, so your screen will come up.
Thank you, Dr. Wilkins. Good morning, everyone. It's a great honor and pleasure for me to serve on this committee. I look forward to working with my fellow board members.
Thank you, Eric. So Chair, I mean, Trustee Barnes, that is the IT report at this time.
Thank you very much. Communications and marketing update.
Okay, I'll be providing a communications and marketing update. Michelle Ball has transitioned to a, to another state. And so we are searching for a strategic director of communications. We are also searching for our chief information officer. So if in your network, you know some good people. The CIO position is open. The one for the executive director of strategic communications has closed, but the search committee is in the process of screening the applicants at this time. So we would just have a few updates from Cam. One of the major initiatives that communications and marketing worked on branding since our last meeting was our Viking Plus Initiative. Vice Chancellor Brown mentioned it in his presentation. The chancellor mentioned more in her report this, this afternoon. But I would just say that communications and marketing worked with our executive team to produce the branding for this initiative, which includes our website and other materials that we will be marketing on this initiative. Media coverage, communications and marketing, we are trying our best to tell our stories, and we are in the news. You will find a detailed report in our board materials. This month, instead of giving you one summary report, I gave you three so that you could see the activity for the months of March, April, and May. But here is a sampling of the places in media that we have been featured. And as you see, television stations across the state and in other states, periodicals, magazines across the United States, but also when we were in the United Airlines article. That was picked up internationally, so we were even in some international magazines over this past reporting period. For a strategic initiative update, we are continuing to work in process of improving our processes and communications and marketing. This is to improve our relations and interactions with our customers here on campus. We are also looking at how do we bring about operational efficiencies to enhance our customer service, the quality of our customer service. So these are activities that we are doing in terms of getting feedback from our campus community so that we can retool the services in the way that we are marketing our services. And then the final strategic initiative is enhancements to our website. The first phase to enhancing our university website will be to implement an Intranet. And with our Intranet, we are taking content that really should not be public facing off of our website, and we're putting it inside of an internal website so that only university personnel will see that content. And once we remove that information, then we will do a website redesign. I am pleased to report that the Intranet project is well underway. We have a completion date of this summer, and we are definitely, we should hit that target without any issues. Trustee Barnes, that concludes my report.
Any questions for Dr. Wilkins or comments? If not, thank you very much, sir. Customer service task force, up next. Deputy Sanders.
Good morning again, everyone. So in the interest of time, I'm just going to spend about one minute. As you all know, we are continuing to move our strategic plan forward, and customer service has great significance at Elizabeth City State University. I want to again thank Chancellor Dixon and to thank Vice Chancellor and Chief of Staff, Dr. Wilkins, for allowing me the opportunity to pull together a team made up of representation across the campus to help move this initiative forward. I will say that we are operating on the three pillars. Those pillars are words that our chancellor shared with us from day one, and that's accountability, commitment, and excellence. And so those will be the pillars on which the customer service task force will operate. I look forward to sharing our progress with you during the next meeting. We are excited about enhancing quality customer service across our campus. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Ms. Sanders? If not, thank you very much. If there's nothing further, without objection, the committee meeting is adjourned.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Barnes, and thank you to all of our chair, committee chairs this morning. And just on behalf of the board, Chancellor, you and your team, the presentations this morning, each one knocked everything out the park. The quality of work, and as Trustee Barnes said earlier today, is, you know, don't confuse effort with results. We got a bunch of results today, and we have seen this time and time again, and it's extraordinary, given the times that we all are in. So just, it's a heartfelt thank you to you and your team, each one. It was just excellent. All right, I'm going to go ahead and call our next meeting to order. We are 30 minutes behind in time or so, maybe a little more. I'm going to use some executive privilege unless Alan pulls me back. I'm counting on you, Alan. I'm going to change a couple things around, but I would like you to know that I am going to go into an extended closed session today. So if you haven't gotten up to stretch your legs or to get a glass of water, please feel free to do so. I have a few top of mind things that we'll be talking about once I call the meeting to order. And then we are doing this, we're having our longer closed session this morning because we have a couple of committee members and board members who will not be available this afternoon. And with that, I'd like to call the Committee on University Governance to order, and I'm calling you, Ms. Sanders, for our roll call.
Committee on University Governance, Trustee Jan King Robinson.
Present.
Trustee Lynn Bunch.
Present.
Trustee Stephanie Johnson. Trustee Harold Barnes.
Present.
Trustee Cam Brown.
Present.
Trustee Andy Culpepper. And Trustee Paul Time. You do have a call.
All right, thank you very much. I'd like a motion for the approval of minutes for March 8th, 2021.
Excuse me, Chair Robinson, are you going to read the?
Oh, thank you so much. I'm already in my meeting. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty, let me slow my roll. As Chair of the committee, I want to remind everyone that we will be conducting today's meeting pursuant to the new amendments to the Open Meetings Act that apply during states of emergency. The amendments were signed into law and allow for public bodies to meet via electronic means. The new law does require, however, that we take all votes via roll call, which we will do today. Additionally, pursuant to the amendments to the law, all chats, instant messages, texts, or other written communications between members of the board regarding the transaction of the public business during the remote meeting are deemed a public record. Finally, I will ask all committee members, board members, and participating staff to please identify yourself before participating in deliberations, including making motions, proposed amendments, and raising points of order. As Chair of the Governance Committee, it is my responsibility to remind all members of the board of their duty under the State Government Ethics Act to avoid conflicts of interest and appearances of conflict of interest as required by this act. Each member has received the agenda and related information for the Board of Trustees Committee meeting. If any board member knows of any conflict of interest or appearance of conflict with respect to any matter coming before the Board of Trustees at this meeting, the conflict appearance of conflict should be identified at this time. Thank you. Hearing none, I now will ask for approval of the minutes. May I have a motion?
This is Culpepper. I move that we approved the minutes of March meeting.
Thank you. You have a second?
Stephanie Johnson.
Roll call for, roll call for the minutes. Trustee Robinson.
Present. Oh, yes. Thank you.
Trustee Bunch.
Yes.
Trustee Johnson offered the second. Trustee Barnes.
Aye.
Trustee Brown.
Yes.
And Trustee Culpepper offered the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Two very quick points. I will defer the advancement brief information that I planned to share with you today. I did send everybody the slides, but we had three slides that we were going to talk about. September meeting. There was an excellent book also that was shared. I'm going to try to figure out how we can get everyone a copy of this book. I would like to say in committee meeting, heartfelt thank you to Vice Chair Bunch, who shoulder to shoulder with me in this planning, who actually started this a couple years ago, and then VC Walton for finding us an outstanding facilitator. Chancellor, it really was a very good, solid meeting, and a lot of work to come out of that. So we'll discuss that at greater length at our September meeting. The other item I have is just high five to all of our board members. We are going to hit our 100% giving goal. That, that really is wonderful. This helps our chancellor and her team in saying our board is all in on everything that goes out asking for assistance or money. The board is all in, so thank you all for making that happen. And then the last item is our nominating committee. I think we heard about that a little bit earlier today. Phyllis Bosmore has agreed to be our chair. Andy Culpepper is on the board, on the committee, as well as our student trustee, Jimmy Chambers. So you will be hearing from them following this meeting as we will vote in September for our new office. So thank you all for that. I would like to now turn to Dr. Shamika Lane for our human resources update.
Good morning, all. You have before you the personnel report. Are there any questions? Hearing none, Madam Chair, we will need to move into closed session when you're ready to discuss the promotion and tenure items.
Thank you. Call on Vice Chair for the motion.
I move that we go into closed session in accordance with North Carolina General Statute, section 143-318.11, to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment, or conditions of initial employment of an employee or prospective employee, and to consult with our attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and ECSU.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Roll call. Trustee Robinson.
Yes.
Trustee Bunch offered the motion. Trustee Johnson.
Yes.
Trustee Barnes offered the second. Trustee Brown.
Yes.
And Trustee Culpepper. And trustee Culpeper? One moment.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon, everyone. I am delighted to call to order our Board of Trustees meeting June 8th, 2021. And I am also delighted and blessed to be able to call on my good friend, Trustee Harold Barnes, who's going to bring us the invocation today.
Let us bow our heads. Lord, today you have entrusted us with the business of Elizabeth City State University. Please God, our hearts and mind, so that we make the right decisions about matters of complexities and trility and consequence that will impact this university long after we adjourn this meeting. Continue to give purpose to our work, meaning to our struggle, and direction to our striving, and cause us to understand that what we do here today and in the future will cause young men and women to walk confidently in the direction of their own dreams and to live the life that they have imagined for themselves. Then our work will not be in vain. Give us this petition, O Lord. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so very much. And we'd just like to again welcome our new board members, Stephen Friedrich, who at this time is going to receive the oath of office from our beloved Honorable Judge Ula Reid. Thank you for being with us, Judge Reid.
Thank you for having me. Mr. Friedrich?
I saw his name.
Yes, I did, yeah. Aye, sorry about that.
Yeah, you're all right. You're good. All righty.
All right, you ready?
Yes.
All right. If you raise your right hand, please, and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Stephen Friedrich.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will effectively discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As a member of the Board of Trustees.
As a member of the Board of Trustees.
Of Elizabeth City State University.
Of Elizabeth City State University.
Further, I do solemnly and sincerely swear.
Further, I do solemnly and sincerely swear.
That I will be faithful.
That I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
To the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers.
And to the constitutional powers.
And authorities.
And authorities.
Which are.
Which are.
Or may be.
Or may be.
Established for the government thereof.
Established for the government thereof.
And that I will endeavor to support.
And that I will endeavor to support.
Maintain.
Maintain.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution of said state.
The Constitution of said state.
Not inconsistent with.
Not inconsistent with.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Mr. Friedrich.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations, trustee. Welcome.
Thank you.
Already, already got your rolling skates on. Thank you.
Yes.
You have, jumping right in. And thank you, Judge Reid. And we certainly look forward to having you in September and every time after. So we appreciate.
A Viking at heart, so anytime you call me.
We know that. Thank you. Appreciate it. Have a blessed day.
You too. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye now.
Thank you.
All righty, so let me get all my papers back together. I apologize. We had quite a meeting and I shuffled everything together. So I apologize. I have to give you.
Ms. Robinson, we can move forward with the roll call.
That would be great while I'm looking for mine. Thank you. Roll call, please. Mrs. Sanders.
I am prepared to handle that if you like.
Thank you, Mrs. Sanders.
This is the roll call for the June 8th, 2021 Board of Trustees meeting. Trustee Harold Barnes.
Present.
Trustee Phyllis Bosomworth.
Present.
Trustee Kim Brown.
Present.
Trustee Lynn Bunch.
Present.
Trustee Andy Culpepper.
Present.
Trustee Jimmy Chambers. Trustee Chris Evans. Trustee Chris Evans. Trustee Stephen Friedrich. Trustee Stephanie Johnson.
Present.
Trustee Jan King Robinson.
Present.
Trustee Tracy Swain.
Present.
Trustee Paul Tyne. Trustee Kenneth Wilkins. Thank you. There is a quorum.
Thank you. As Chair of the ECSU Board of Trustees, it is my responsibility to remind all members of the Board of their duty under the State Government Ethics Act to avoid conflicts of interest and appearances of conflicts of interest as required by this act. Each member has received the agenda and related information for this Board of Trustees meeting. If any, excuse me, if any board member knows of or any conflict of interest or appearance of conflict with respect to any matter coming before the Board of Trustees at this meeting, the conflict of interest of conflicts should be identified at this time. Hearing none, we'll ask for motion for approval of the minutes of the March 9th, 2021, and special meeting on April 23rd, 2021.
Barnes, so moved.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Roll call for the minutes. Trustee Barnes offered the motion. Trustee Bosomworth.
Yes.
Trustee Brown.
Yes.
Trustee Bunch.
Yeah.
Trustee Culpepper.
Yes.
Trustee Johnson.
Yes.
Second. Trustee Friedrich.
Yeah.
Trustee Robinson.
Yes.
Trustee Swain. Thank you. We have an approval.
Thank you. We have one item on our consent agenda today, and that is approval of candidates for promotion and tenure. May I have a motion, please?
Barnes, so moved.
Second.
Culpepper, second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Roll call for the approval on the candidates for promotion and tenure. Trustee Barnes offered the motion. Trustee Bosomworth.
Yes.
Trustee Brown.
Yes.
Trustee Bunch.
Yes.
Trustee Culpepper offered the second. Trustee Friedrich.
Yes.
Trustee Johnson.
Yes.
Trustee Robinson.
Yes.
Trustee Swain.
Yes.
Thank you. Approved.
Thank you. We now like to call on trustee Stephanie Johnson to give us the report on the Academic Excellence and Strategic Growth Committee.
Yes. The Academic Excellence and Strategic Growth had no action items. As information, the committee received an update on the SACSCOC reaffirmation timeline from Dr. Payne, the interim Associate Vice Chancellor for Academic Affairs. The onsite visit was conducted virtually, March 15th through the 18th, 2021, and the university received no recommendations for the compliance report and only three recommendations for the quality enhancement plan. Dr. Payne updated regarding, check, check the resume, which included majors in music, graphic design, and digital media. Additionally, check the resume partnered with Elizabeth City Paspatank Public Schools, Northeastern High, and Paspatank County High. An update was provided regarding aviation science, unmanned aircraft systems, and emergency management regarding tactical meetings, which was conducted to develop a plan to use after a hurricane or a disaster. Dr. Payne provided information regarding students from, from graphic designs and digital media participating in the Longleaf Film Festival. She provided information regarding the new Provost Newsletter, which was launched in February, and another issue launched in April. A demonstration was provided to show the interactive nature of the newsletter. The Viking Summer School Program was launched and funds up to six credits in the summer session, which targets students who fell behind. This initiative was reached over, has reached over 500 students and funded over $700,000 in grants. Dr. Payne presented information regarding the General Education Plus Summer School Learning Community, which is designed to improve first-year instructional practices for summer school courses and currently has 16 facility participate, faculty, I'm sorry, participate. She presented the criteria for certificate programs that have been completed to allow with community and employer demands. Additionally, the first certificate over 15 years has been awarded. Dr. Payne reported aviation science has been authorized by the FAA and RATP, which allows graduates to receive their allied transport certificate after 1,000 flight hours instead of 1,500 flight hours. Also, aviation science has entered a partnership with United Airlines Aviate Pilot Recruitment Programs. Dr. Payne was pleased to announce enrollment management new hires with James Pennix serving as Assistant Vice Chancellor for Enrollment Management and Ms. Carmen Figwall, Figwall, Wigfall, I'm sorry, serving as the registrar. Mr. Pennix presented enrollment data, which with the, the number of completed applications, admitted applicants, and confirmed students for 2018 through 2021. Information was also provided regarding freshman and transfer applications. Current data was provided regarding the Common Black College Application, and there are currently 64 confirmed applications. This is the report. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Johnson. Before moving on to our next committee, I just want to recognize that we have a visiting trustee Johnny Tillitt. I think somewhere in our Zoom space here today. I just wanted to recognize him and thank him for jumping on the bandwagon early. Trustee Tillitt will be sworn in in September, so welcome trustee Tillitt. And Ms. Sanders, is that it? Is for our visiting trustees? I don't want to overlook anyone.
I believe that trustee Jones could only join this morning, so.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, and I'd like to call on trustee Kim Brown for our report on the Committee on Student Excellence.
All right. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and to the Board. I'll be giving the update on the Committee on Student Excellence. During the Committee on Student Excellence, we received committee reports from, our SGA recently re-elected SGA President Jimmy Chambers, Vice Chancellor for Student Affairs, Dr. Gary Brown, and our Athletics Director, Director George Bright. SGA President Jimmy Chambers provided an update that elaborated on our, his 2021 goals. Also gave us information relative to student body participating in peaceful protest around the death of. Also gave us information relative to student body participating in peaceful protest around the death of Andrew Brown and introduced us to his Executive Board and the events that they've held this semester, including Viking Fest and Law Enforcement Today Dialogue, and began to introduce us as well to community partnerships. Vice Chancellor Gary Brown gave us an extensive review of Student Affairs to include the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one review, which included COVID nineteen update that we've basically operated with a two point two seven positivity, positivity rate. That our residence halls were seventy-five percent full. Counseling services, we provided over four hundred counseling moments for our student body. Workforce development and Project GA twenty eight workshops were held. Community connections, ninety-eight percent of our respondents provided positive feedback. And student conduct and community standard, fourteen student conduct programs, thirty classroom presentations, and thirty-seven voter and civic engagement events. So you can see they were very busy. Under summer update, new student, new student orientation is scheduled for June sixteenth through the seventeenth, the twenty-third through the twenty-fourth, and July seventh through eighth. Student Affairs also will have a professional development series. And then under strategic planning, dealt with four different initiatives, tracking student participation in clubs, alumni career program development, campus climate survey, and additional funding support that they've pursued and where we stood. At this point, seven hundred and seven thousand dollars in grants have been sought, one hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars worth have been awarded. And then, and he also presented a video that gave us a capsule of all of the happenings around the campus during this academic year. And then finally, Athletics Director George Bright began by leading us in a moment of silence as we celebrated the life of long Viking, longtime Viking basketball coach, Coach Bobby Vaughn, and celebrated not just his legacy at our university, but his legacy to collegiate athletics. He also helped us to understand some of the requirements as Board of trustee members that are acceptable and not acceptable via social media, and kept us informed on the name, image, and likeness updates. This concludes the report from the Student Excellence Committee.
Thank you very much, trustee. Alrighty, we are ready now, and I call on for the last time, and this makes me unhappy that it's the last time I'm calling on my, my friend. Trustee Harold Barnes to bring the committee report on operational excellence.
Thank you, Madam Chair. During the Committee on Excellence, we received informational reports on the following area. Infrastructure, Bice Hall renovation for Bice are completed. Ucal and Doze Hall, demolition of Ucal and Doze Hall are completed. Moore's Hall, renovation for Moore's Hall are completed. GR Little, renovations for GR Little Library are completed. All completed projects are in the final phase of checking off punch list items. Anya Hola extended the invitation to board members to look at these spaces by contacting her if you want to do a walkthrough. Also, eight hundred ton chiller, received the eight hundred ton chiller and cooling tower will be completed by end of June. Hurricane Dorian repairs. Phase one bid received on Viking Village, University Tower, lower roof, JR Jenkins, and MB Thor building. Construction will be completed by end of summer. Phase two of design of roof repair for STEM, McClendon, Griffin, ITC, Vaughn Center, Trig, and Dixon Hall are under review by SCO bidding. Will end, will, will be end of June, and contracts will start in the fall. HVAC controlled upgrades, phase one of HVAC controls is complete. These buildings include Griffin, M, McClendon, Lane, Fine Arts, Student Center, and K E White Center. Remaining buildings will be completed by end of summer. Vaughn Center Pool, the completion of the Vaughn Center Pool is expected by July. New flooring, wall repairs, and paint are completed. Plumbing and new diving board are in progress. It was reported that RFPs are being posted for the new campus master plan. Committee members will be reached to narrow down proposals. Information and technology update, Eric Zahami was introduced as Interim CIO as Suresh had resigned. Communications and marketing update, Michelle Ball transitioned to another state. The position of Executive Director of Strategic Communications and CIO are being screened. Branding initiative of Viking Plus to include website and other marketing tools are underway. Through detail, media outlets, ECSU is telling their story and activities through March, April, and May are being seen. The office is working on improving process to enhance customer service. Development of an inter, internet is underway, intranet, excuse me, is underway to communicate campus information so the website can be redesigned to be completed by the end of summer. And this concludes the report for the Committee on Operational Excellence.
Thank you, sir. And now we'd like to call on trustee Andy Culpepper for the report on the Committee on Finance Audit and University Advancement.
Trustee Culpepper, please unmute. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, and thank you, Ms. Sanders, for reminding me to unmute. During the Committee on Finance Audit and University Advancement this morning, committee received updates from Finance, Internal Audit, and University Advancement. Vice Chancellor for Business and Finance, Lisa McClinton, presented information, items only, which were the fiscal year twenty-one general fund and trust and auxiliary budget updates. An update and approved fiscal year twenty-two fee increases. Additional COVID funding that ECSU has recently received. An updated financial outlook for the fiscal year twenty-two general fund budget. An operational excellent progress update. And an auxiliary service update, general fund expenditures as of three twenty-one twenty-one were favorable at sixty-eight point three percent of budget and trust and auxiliary fund balances are twenty-six point two million, with fifteen million of that attributed to the recent fifteen million dollar gift. On tuition and fees, the Board of Governors approved a thirty dollar increase to our health services fee and deferred the thirty dollar mandatory increase to the campus security fee to fiscal year twenty-three. ECSU has received an additional fourteen point eight million in COVID funding since the last Board of Trustees meeting. Funds must be spent by May two thousand twenty-two, however. Regarding the fiscal year twenty-two general fund budget, ECSU and the rest of the UNC system is hopeful. Excellent. Update indicated that progress has been made on strategic goal number five, which involves prioritizing budgetary resources according to the strategic plan. Finally, it was announced that Aramark was identified as ECSU's next dining partner. Aramark currently serves fourteen other North Carolina public and private colleges and universities and will make an approximately two million dollar investment here at ECSU. And by the way, they invited everybody, every trustee to lunch or dinner at the university to try Aramark out. And I believe that's effective now. Chief Audit Officer, Sharnita Parker, presented two informational items only. First item was an update on the required annual review of the internal, internal audit charter in the Audit Committee Charter. There were no changes warranted for either charters during this annual review. The second item was a summary of completed reports completed this quarter, which were, one, Student Health Services Operations and CARES Act funding. The Student Health Service Operations Review was conducted to determine operational efficiency of services provided. There were three observations identified and follow-up will be conducted in future. The second one, the CARES Act funding review focused on the distribution of funds to all students who qualified for funds based on funding requirements. There were no observations identified for this review. Then Vice Chancellor Anita Watson from Advancement presented informational items only, which were an update to the Committee on Fundraising, Progress to Date, Advancements, Operation Enhancements, and Overview of Advancements in UNC System Benchmarking Total Dollars Received. Those to date are a million four hundred and ninety-eight thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars. This is a difference of roughly a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars over where we were last year. The goal for fiscal year twenty-one is one point four million, based on the three-year average. Steady trends for donor participation are reflected across various constituents. Current total numbers of donors is a thousand four hundred and twenty-three. Leadership given from both the foundation and the trustee boards giving are at ninety-one percent or greater, with the anticipation of both boards being at a hundred percent by the end of the week. Recent fundraising efforts were reviewed, which including the Founder's Day Scholarship Gala fourteen, and the fifth annual day of giving, both exceeding their fundraising goals. Vice Chancellor Walton provided details on current advancement operation established much to include three hundred and sixty double the donation black band awards and stewardship management, target analysis, and O-Matic. All platforms integrate with Razor's Edge to provide efficiencies in the advancements area and reduced areas. Put that in my language is we now have software that works better than the software we had before. An overview of Advancement one oh one was providing, including the core discipline in our goal for the ECSU University Advancement Model. Finally, an overview of fiscal year nineteen twenty UNC system advancement data was shared for benchmarking, was presented and discussed. That was the discussion on how well we're doing compared to other universities. And although we don't raise as much money, we raise a whole lot per person employee. We do better than all the other universities in that category. This concludes the report of Committee on Finance Audit and University Advancement. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee. And again, for the time, I'm calling on my vice chair. I'm gonna call on my road dog. We started plotting many times on the road to UNC. Trustee Lynn Bunch, will you bring the committee report on regional development on behalf of trustee Tyne?
During the Committee on Regional Development, several updates were provided. We have one strategic goal, goal six point two point three, creating and utilizing a Board of Visitors that scheduled to be completed by June thirtieth. Chancellor Dixon is in the process of inviting the selected nominees to serve. Our second goal that spans the five-year term of the strategic plan is six point three point two, dealing with economic development. Trustee Tyne has convened local and regional economic development stakeholders who have expressed the need for Regional Economic Summit. These stakeholders agree such an event led by ECSU would be of great value to the region. The committee has set a tentative date of October the twenty eighth, twenty twenty one at the K E White Graduate Center. We have extended the invitation to Secretary Michelle Sanders of the NC Department of Commerce to serve as the keynote speaker addressing opportunities in the Northeast now and future. We are waiting her confirmation. We are pleased that Dr. Kingsley Nawala, ECSU Professor of Business and Economics, will lead the regional economic forecast and will pull the team together to begin that work. The committee is exploring topics that will be of interest throughout the region. Some of these topics include renewable energy, workforce development, economic gardening, farming, and transportation and broadband opportunities. We continue to be proud of the great efforts by our Small Business and Technology Development Center under the direction of Ms. Wanda Cooper. As of the second quarter, the center has served a total of two hundred and sixty-four businesses. On April fifteenth, the SBTDC sponsored a regional job fair. Forty-five businesses participated. Carson Rich, Special Assistant to the Chancellor for External Affairs, provided a briefing on the status of the state budget. He noted that with less than a month before the new fiscal year begins, there is still no new state budget for North Carolina. And Senate Leader Phil Berger has already indicated a willingness to move ahead with smaller mini-budget bills by mid-June. Whether or not the legislature is able to reach an agreement on a new state budget or take the route of passing mini-budgets, there has been reassurance that the UNC system agenda will be taken care of. The House, Senate, and Governor's Office have all given positive feedback regarding the legislative requests for the system and its campuses. Overall, many state officials, including Governor Cooper, have expressed that they do not want a repeat of the prolonged budget stalemate that occurred in the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty biennium. This concludes the report of the Committee on Regional Development.
Thank you, Vice Chair Bunch. Alrighty, we are up now for the Committee on University Governance. During the Committee on University Governance, a resource, a human resources update was provided. Board members received information on personnel matters. Legal affairs update and items requiring approval of the board were discussed in closed session. That concludes the report for the Committee on University Governance. Now I'd like to take some time and personal privileges, Chair, to recognize our trustees who are going off the Board of Trustees. I'm gonna start with trustee Vice Chair Lynn Bunch. And I don't know if you all know the word for clamped, but I'm getting for clamped. You know, Lynn started her term, she's ending her term, June thirtieth. She served as Vice Chair and Chair of Academic Excellence and Strategic Growth. Lynn and I had a pact that we were going to run together, not unlike the pact that Harold Barnes and I had and Barnes and Brown had. So those pact worked well. We had enough difference of opinion to really be able to balance out one another. Lynn could not have done what we did on advancement side for sure, and on sex side, Lynn actually loves sex and all those little details and all those meetings. We were, I learned a lot from her. We're going to miss you. Thank you, and I know that you'll be a forever Viking. So thank you for your service to the Vikings and for continuing to stay with us.
Thank you, Jan.
I don't believe trustee Wilkins is with us. Is that correct? So I'm sorry he's not here. I, I know he had another event. Trustee Wilkins, I will say, in his absence was very engaged trustee. He challenged me. He challenged me and I really appreciate it, as I do with all of our trustees. When I would try to cut people off, that he'd be the first to say, no, I've got more to say. And I love that, you know, because I think that's who we are, you know, to be reminded that it's what we're talking about and not the time it's taking. Trustee has been with us for four years. And I know he is a Viking as an alumni and he will continue to be highly engaged with us. And so if you get an opportunity to thank him in person, please do. Trustee Harold Barnes. He is resigning and returning after six years on the board to his profession of the law. He served as Board Chair and chaired various committees and as Vice Chair. And we have had many, many spirited conversations, because as much as it looks like we agree on things, we really have a lot of difference of opinion. And it has been excellent for two lawyers to be able to go down the rabbit hole from time to time and come out with, you know, our respective opinions, but still feeling informed and better for it. So personally, we'll miss you. We'll miss your advice and counsel, the entire board will. But we know that you're fighting the good fight, that you will continue to get in good trouble. And you're a forever Viking doubly, having been a student, alum, and now triply. And also, of course, your term as a trustee. So we thank you, sir, and look forward to you continuing to be involved in our lives. Trustee Tracy Swain, two years, eight, two terms, eight years on the board. I chaired Infrastructure Committee and has been another source of great advice and counsel to me personally. I call Tracy the Board Whisperer. He doesn't say a lot at board meetings, but he will get to you and get in your ear and give you the advice and counsel that you would not otherwise get. And I have personally been a recipient of that and better for it when I've gotten the unsolicited phone calls or pull the elbow by the side and let me know about the world from a different vantage point and has made us better as a board and certainly as a university. Trustee Swain, thank you for your service. And I know also, forever Viking, that you will continue to be with us and be ready to serve in any way. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
I'm gonna miss you all.
You all do.
I'll miss y'all. You know, you can come back whenever you want. I'd also like to announce that the Board of Trustee Nominating Committee will be prepared to present the slate during the September meeting. Phyllis Bosnworth is our Chair, Andy Culperper and Jimmy Chambers will round out that committee. The call for nominations go out in July. And of course, voting will take place during the September meeting. And I ask you all to put on your thinking caps and nominate, self-nominate. We've got a very exciting time that continues for the Vikings under the leadership of our incredibly capable Chancellor. Chancellor, I'm gonna get ready to turn the ball over to you, but just want to say that with every meeting, you blow us away. You and your team blow us away again and again. And it's really phenomenal, the level of engagement of all of your direct reports, of their reports, of the faculty, our students, we see it. We experience it and we thank you for it, because it doesn't happen without leadership and consistency of leadership. So we thank you. And it is your floor, Chancellor. Take her up.
Thank you, Chair. Chair Robinson, good afternoon, everyone, members of the ECSU Board of Trustees, administrative staff, and guests joining us today. Thank you all. Just a special thanks, as Chair Robinson mentioned, you know, you never claim as a leader to be able to do everything yourself. It takes a good team, a good group of folks around you to help create the vision, the leadership. And I have definitely gotten that from all of you as trustees. So I greatly appreciate everything that you all have done. More recently, we have heard quotes such as unprecedented times, a year for the record books, resilience. These are just a few terms and quotes that we have used a lot throughout the last fifteen months to describe one of the most challenging periods in world, national, state, and local history. I never imagined a pandemic, a major cyber attack, and social injustice affecting our country, community, and campus in such a compact span of time. However, with the guidance of the UNC System Office, the deliberative counsel of my senior leadership team, and the support of our employees, alumni, students, ECSU, we have definitely gone against the great odds we've been faced with. And we indeed are resilient and we continue to move this university in the right direction. So in times such as these, I appreciate the support of this board. You don't know how much I appreciate all of you and how I brag on the fact that I have the best Board of Trustees that anybody can ask for, because it does matter when the leadership team, faculty and staff, trustees, alumni, when we all come together to do the best thing for our university. That's where we get the positive impacts that we have seen in such a short period of time here at ECSU over my three-year tenure. I appreciate each and every one of you. But I will be remiss if I don't personally pause to thank the members whose terms have ended on this board. Trustee Harold Barnes, thank you. Thank you so much. You have been with me and with this university for a very long time, and I know you will continue to do so. But from day one, when I stepped foot on this campus, I knew that I would have your support, because you have already proven your leadership and the vision for ECSU that you had to put in place. Being a part of that, being there with you side by side at the time you were Chair of the Board of Trustees, I greatly appreciate your continued support for ECSU and for me. So thank you, sir. You will be missed. Trustee Lynn Bunch, thank you. Thank you, Trustee Bunch, for your expertise that you brought to this board. As a former college president, I knew that I could always count on you to understand what it's like to be a president, a chancellor of a university. And I thank you for your continued counsel and your leadership and support on this board. And Trustee Tracy Swain, thank you so much, Trustee Swain. I tell you, Board Chair, that you mentioned he was the Board Whisperer. But I tell you, when Tracy Swain speaks and brings things up to your attention, it is always significant and valuable. So I thank you, Trustee Swain, for all that you have done and your service on this board is greatly appreciated. And Trustee Wilkins, I know he's not with us today, but thank you, Trustee Wilkins. If you're listening or if you see this on, you know, as a recording, thank you so much for your continued commitment. And all of you as trustees, we will miss you all. But thank you so much for your dedication, your leadership, your vision, your time, your treasures, and your talents. We appreciate it and none of that went unnoticed. So thank you so much. I also want to welcome new board member, Dr. Tiffany Jones, who we were able to meet earlier today, and reappointed board members, trustee Stephanie Johnson. Thank you, trustee Phyllis Bosnworth, and our new trustee, but also reappointed trustee, Stephen Friedrich. Thank you all so much. I look forward to continuing to work together. Thank you for all that you have done for this board and will continue to do as we move the university forward. Since our last meeting, our community experienced social unrest resulting from the killing of Andrew Brown. When Mayor Parker declared a state of emergency, ECSU, along with the College of the Albemarle and Mid-Atlantic Christian University pivoted quickly to send students home to complete the semester remotely. So instead of ending as we had normally scheduled, we had to end courses and, well, stop classes to pivot to online instruction a week before we were originally scheduled to end the semester at ECSU. And that's because the safety and well-being of our students was our top priority. And I want to thank everyone for the generous support, our donors, our supporters, for Given Tuesday. This is just an example of how resources can help us. And we have a resource form, actually, it's a resource fund, and it's a student emergency fund to assist students when traveling home. So when things like this happen that are unexpected, out of our control, even from the standpoint of a hurricane evacuation, the Student Emergency Fund helps us to help students and their families if they need to travel home under a circumstance that is uncontrollable and under our control. And so Vice Chancellor Brown and his staff purchased bus tickets, plane tickets, train tickets, and gas cards for students who needed to get home when we were experiencing the social unrest in the city, for them to go home within a forty-eight-hour time span. So we do not overlook the needs of our students. We want our students and their families to be safe and we want to help them as much as we can. So donations received for this fund will continue to help us assist our students in times of need. So thank you all who contribute to that fund. We need it and we use it wisely. May eighth, we held in-person commencement and we conferred one hundred and ninety-eight degrees here at ECSU. It was an emotional, spiritual celebration for our graduates and their families. It was one that people have often said they will never forget. And I think it's just a testimony to all that we have been through. We have still been victorious. We were not defeated. And to be able to have a ceremony in person after experiencing a year where there's been so many challenges, it was just an opportunity for everyone just to kind of breathe and exhale and let go of some of those thoughts and challenges that we've experienced to celebrate the graduates. And so we're quite thankful for trustees that were there in person, as well as those who joined by video, virtually. Thank you so much for your participation. In response to the pandemic, the university is operating a weekly COVID-19 vaccination clinic, Thursday through Sunday, from noon to seven PM in the K.E. White Graduate Center. We also have taken our mobile vaccination clinic into the community to further serve in the collective efforts to minimize the spread of COVID-19. Understanding the financial burden that our students and their families are experiencing during these difficult times, we've launched Viking Plus, and Dr. Brown talked about that. We launched this in May, and this is a comprehensive set of initiatives to help students and their families afford a high-quality education at ECSU. This initiative includes free course credits, emergency funding, and housing and meal grants. To date, we have provided four point two million dollars in free course credits and grant funding to assist our students. So we should be quite proud of that. Great things are happening at ECSU and it is being noticed in the news and on social media. For example, the recent partnership with United Airlines. Many of you heard, when I started here at ECSU, I said we need to partner with a major airline. Well, that has come to fruition. So I'm so excited. This is a huge win for both United Airlines and ECSU. Through the United Airlines Aviate Pilot Recruitment Program, United Airlines will provide coaching and support to our students on their path to becoming United Airline pilots. When news of the United Airlines partnership in ECSU and two other HBCUs in other states, it garnered local, regional, state, national, and international coverage. So that's great for us. We are forging our future at ECSU and the future remains bright. June thirtieth will mark the end of year one of the two thousand twenty, twenty-two-five Strategic Plan. This afternoon, as promised, I'm going to give you a very high overview of where we are with our progress. And I've asked our vice, my vice chancellors to give you updates at every meeting so you can see who's being held accountable for which areas, goals, within the Strategic Plan. And you can see that progress, but now I want to show it to you from a broader scope and bring it all together so that the trustees see, regardless of the fact that we were in a pandemic, we were still making progress. So Carson, if you will, please start the slides for me. So in early two thousand nineteen, for those of you who are new to the board, ECSU and working with our trustees and our students, staff, faculty, alumni, community members, it was a very deliberate conservative act, collective thought process in bringing everyone to the table to talk about where they see ECSU now and where they see us going in five years. This Strategic Plan is a roadmap for us. And we said, we're going to stick by this roadmap and get these things done that have rose to the top as far as the importance of where we are as an institution. So this Strategic Plan, we titled "Forging Our Future", and we used an outside firm to help us develop it, working with the trustees and the staff. The final draft was approved by the trustees in December two thousand nineteen. And it was scheduled to, or we scheduled it to launch in fall two thousand twenty. Well, in fall two thousand twenty, or prior to, is when we were in the mix of the pandemic. At that time, we didn't know how much of the Strategic Plan we would be able to complete. But as you see, our team, my team, myself, our faculty, our staff, were very committed to seeing and making sure that we can get as much of this done as we could and to stick to the plan despite we would have had, we, you know, faced some challenges and being in a pandemic at the time. So in March twen-, oh, go back, Carson. So in March two thousand twenty, less than five months after the launch, we, of course, started this process. And we faced, as I mentioned, some of those obstacles there. And we got a headline out of the Daily Advance. So the excitement was even also in the community to say ECSU has a plan. We have a plan in place that we're sticking to it. And this is our roadmap for continuing to build our university for the future. So there are key, six key areas of impact within the plan. One, academic excellence, student experience, sustainable growth, institutional advancement, operational excellence, and regional development. And you've heard those, the process that our vice chancellors are looking at in regards to how they're structuring, making decisions about and setting priorities based on these six goals and the objectives within them. So let's look at our strategic initiative action items. Each of the six strategic action items has a list of its own. And so across that, those areas, you can see sixty-seven action items initiated for year one. So through that process, we wanted to make sure that we have priorities. We came out with the sixty-seven items that the board has seen before. And despite those difficulties, as I mentioned, we were still able to achieve over ninety-five percent of what we said we were gonna do in year one. And I am very happy and bored, I hope you join me, with the excitement that we were still able to make such great progress in year one, despite the fact that we are in a pandemic. So our first goal, academic excellence, just to give you a sense, we completed or are in progress seven of our objectives. Within that, we have none at this point that are inactive. Couple of highlights you heard about today during the presentations. Our RATP certification is huge. It was something we've been working on for a long time. So we're glad to see that. And we're also looking at continuing to add to our aviation inventory. We're working with, trying to get support externally for that, more investments, working with partners. And then we continue to look at the market analysis to make sure that we are fitting the, making, that fitting the need in what, in who we are producing in our graduates so that they can go out and be successful in the workforce. so that they can go out and be successful in the workforce. Second, student experience. You heard Dr. Brown talk about this. All 16 are completed or in progress for Year One. And a couple of things here, Dr. Brown and his team, the feasibility study. We have a need for housing. You heard him today. We have 75% already filled as far as the housing that we have available for our students. So that's something we're also stressing, that we are going to need a new residence hall. We are going to need a new guiding facility. And these are capital requests that we are talking about and continuing to advocate for for our university. So I'm very happy about the progress in student experience. Next one, sustainable growth. We've talked about that today as well. I have in progress for all four of these highlights because we want to continue to grow. What we're doing now, under the direction of Mr. Pennix, is we're making sure that we have a foundation and a plan for continued growth each year. Within the plan, we said we wanted to grow at least 100 students each year. Well, last, well, this year alone, 2020, 2021, we exceeded our Year Two goal because we grew significantly in a pandemic, 13%. So that is really putting us on track, and we want to keep that momentum going. And as you can see, our numbers are trending up, where we are seeing growth from where we were this time last year. And we want to get through summer melt. As Mr. Pennix said, we want to get through summer melt, so we want to keep our students and their families engaged in those who are returning, as well as those who are going to be new students, transfer students, coming to us, adult learners. We're seeing an increase in that area as well, so we're excited about that. But we're continuing to make sure that you all see that we're making progress, and we're going to continue to make progress in those areas. Institutional advancement, hats off to B.C. Walton. We've come a long way in a short period of time. She's only been here a little over a year, and it feels like she has put in years of work compared to what she was given when she started this job. So thank you so much, B.C. Walton. But we have completed the review, and she talked a little bit about the assessment of staff and infrastructure for institutional advancement. We know we have to invest in institutional advancement. But what we have there right now, the people we have there right now, working hard, and they're still being productive. But we know this is the area to advance. Fundraising, we're continuing to grow in our gifts, and we want to continue to advocate, as trustee Cole Pepper said, using Razor's Edge to build these lists so that trustees can help us cultivate these relationships and bring more external fundraising into the university. And then we will continue to focus on alumni support and our students' career and professional development piece. And that's going to be a lot of work with, between B.C. Walton, B.C. Brown, and the provost, especially as it pertains to our Quality Enhancement Plan. But everything that is part of that promotes our continued student experience. And so the focus will continue to be there. Operational excellence, we've completed or are in progress in all nine of our first-year objectives in that area. And you've heard B.C. Goodson talk about that and talk about some of the things that we're doing there. We're doing more on the HR side with Dr. Lane, with making sure our employees are onboarding successfully, understanding their role, the university, the history, how our expectations, customer service. All of that is very much important for our new employees, as well as our existing employees, to understand. Our standard operating procedures, customer service, as Deputy Sanders talked about. We have a committee. She's leading that. We're committed to making sure that customer service is a priority. And then continuing to look at our university budgeting process. And that's something operationally, we have to look at and make sure that we understood our intentional decision-making that's taking place in regards to our resources and how that fits into our strategic plan as also part of our funding model. Regional development, trustee Ton, Dr. Wilkins, Carson, Mr. Rich, all of them, your leadership is greatly appreciated in this area. This is important to ECSU, to Northeastern North Carolina, to this entire region as we work together with small businesses and the community to bring more attention to our progress on the economic development side. And so hosting this Regional Development Summit is something we're excited about, plans underway for that, as well as our Board of Visitors. As was mentioned, I'll be appointing Board of Visitors by the end of this month. We're excited about this group. We think this group is going to complement the boards that we already have in place and work together for the betterment of our university as advocates. So we're excited about that. And then also continue to work with our Small Business Center team and continue to help them help small businesses around the region so that we all can grow together and grow this area in a way that we want to really show what the economic investment is in Northeastern North Carolina and what that looks like as we continue to grow as a region. And so a successful first year, forging our future. As I mentioned, we're off to a great start. There were some things we were able to accomplish during the pandemic. There were other things that we were not able to accomplish because of the pandemic and restrictions around COVID-19. And so we have a few inactive items that we will address as the state continues to open up. But I want to thank all of our faculty, staff, students, alumni, this board, our community members, everyone who contributed to the first year of implementing our "Forging Our Future" strategic plan. And we look forward to starting Year Two and also completing those inactive items that we were unable to do because of the pandemic. And we will continue to make progress. I will update you annually on our progress at the end of the year, as I'm doing today. But throughout the year, as you have Board of Trustee meetings, the vice chancellors will be presenting and updating you in their areas based on their objectives that they're trying to meet for the strategic plan so that you are always seeing the progress. But then at the end of the physical year, you will hear from me to get a broader overview, as you did today. So, Madam Chair, I thank you for the opportunity for letting me have a little more time as usual than usual than today because I wanted to update the board on the strategic plan. But thank you all for your continued support of ECSU, of this strategic plan as our roadmap for the future. And we will continue to work to sustain this university for future generations to come. So thank you so much for your continued leadership, Madam Chair, and thank you to the Board of Trustee Members for your trust in us and your advocacy and your vision to move this university in the right direction. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chancellor. Excellent, really excellent work behalf of you and the entire team. It is breathtaking when we stop and look from whence we've come, and particularly from whence you've come in this short amount of time. So thank you on behalf of the board and all the Vikings. As I understand it, do we still have closed-session issues? I know the board is free and clear. Does staff, we have any closed-session issues?
Amen.
Okay, then I think that we have handled our business today. I thank you, board members. Any announcements from anybody before we conclude?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
This is Johnny Tiller. I just, I could not sit here all day and not say something.
We're glad you spoke up.
So thank you. I try, I try to be good, so I'll be, be good. But I just wanted to say to some outgoing members, I'm not going to have a chance to serve with, especially Lynn. Lynn, it's been a long time. I just wanted to, I'm sorry I missed you. My mom says hello, and thank you for the opportunity you gave her back in the day. And I just wanted to say I'm looking forward to being on the board and Harold and I miss Kenneth and all you guys, but I'm looking forward to caring for you, Mr. Barnes, and other members. And Chancellor Dixon, thank you so much for the opportunity. I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Tiller. Really appreciate the comments. Any other comments, or?
I just wanted to say thank you for the warm welcome and the induction. Sorry, I was, we're in the midst of a bit of a construction project by accident here today, so that's why I was moving from room to room. But thank you. I have to say I was very impressed with the organization and the efficiency of this entire meeting. But most importantly, Chancellor, I want to say thank you for the vision that I see for ECSU. And Chairman Rob, I just think it's been fantastic what you've been able to put together together. So thank you guys very much, and I appreciate being, the opportunity to be a part of the future here.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. So we are encouraged. We're sad that we're losing our old members. We're delighted to know that we've got some folks coming in behind who are bringing different sets of skills and contacts, and to know that we're all about the business, but we like to have fun. We tease each other. So I appreciate you, Mr. Tiller, there for just jumping right in, and Mr. Friedrich. There is, you know, the spirit of transparency is a thing that allows us to have a little bit more fun, maybe, than the usual board. We like to kid each other. It's a lot of hard work, but it's all worked from the heart. So we're very...
You're not getting off the board, are you?
I'm getting off being in the leadership role.
You're just retiring as chairman.
I'm retiring as chairman. That's right.
But you're still on the board.
Yes, sir. I will finish out my two years. I want to poke. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay, good.
Yes, yes, yes. But I just felt moved to make those comments today. It's just been...
Still a man for advice and counsel.
To receive it, for sure.
And I'm going to know all members.
I thank you all. I hope that our board members getting off, you won't be strangers that will see you soon and often. And I thank you, board members, for continuing to do what you do with the heart of ECSU at the center of everything. Thank you, Chancellor, and your team. Everybody have an excellent rest of the day and continue to stay safe. God bless.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Thank you all. Thank you.